Fairly comfortable with the makeup of the subcommittees? And do you feel they're-
As I've seen them, I'm comfortable with it. David, are you?
Yeah.
I think the right people are in the right places and they each both engage the subcommittees that they have professional experience in and have desire to really give back in, and I think that's a good recipe for good discussion and good outcomes. So, yeah, I think they're very good fits.
Again, I thank all those who have continued to step forward as Antiglennorth Revitalization Plan continues to make even more progress, and especially under the liaison leadership of Alderman Fanukin and Alderman Jacobson. I appreciate you guys. Okay, now we have presentations. Citizens Environmental Commission Annual Report of Progress on the Implementation and Monitoring of the City's Sustainability Plan. Our Environmental Commission Chair, Dan Kenny, will make that report. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity tonight to share with you and the community all the great work of the Citizens Environmental Commission. You have in your packets information, a report on what we've been doing, and I just want to highlight some of those details. But first, I want to say that it's a real honor and a privilege for me to serve on this commission. I want the council and our city to know that they are very knowledgeable, capable, and very dedicated to protecting the environment for all of our residents. When something comes before us, either from a resident, the mayor, or city council, the commission takes its responsibility seriously. The commission gathers information from all sides of the issue and researches the facts on the subject. When making our recommendations, we weigh both sides, always keeping our focus on what would be best for the environment and what would protect the public safety for all. The details of our 2017 accomplishments are in your packet, as I mentioned, and I would like to highlight some of those details. This past year, the commission continued to make progress on implementing the City of DeKalb Sustainability Plan that was approved by the city council two years ago. As you witnessed last month, we awarded pride awards to outstanding residents who have taken important measures to improve the environment of DeKalb. The Share a Bag program continues to be an impactful accomplishment led by our co-chair, Claire Crone. Claire launched this program with Michelle Gibson of the DeKalb County Health Department to cut down on the amount of plastic bags in circulation. The Share a Bag bins are now in 11 locations, nine of them in the city and two elsewhere in the county. Another event that happened this year that was spearheaded by the CEC was that members of the CEC led a collaborative effort with students from Kishawaki College and other volunteers from the community to clean up littered retention ponds at the Market Square Shopping Center along Sycamore Road. The commission also has been working for months with the city staff to come before you soon, hopefully, with a sustainable residential landscaping ordinance. And the last one I would like to highlight is the work of the commission is doing to collect information, research, and gather community input to inform us as we construct a recommendation for the city regarding the next residential waste hauling contract. To that end, we are holding a public forum in these chambers this coming Thursday, March 1st, at 6:00 p.m. We invite residents of DeKalb to attend this forum, learn about the process, and provide their ideas and comments. Thank you again for this opportunity to update you. I'd be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Dan. Are there any questions? Alderman Origo?
Not so much a question, but a thank you. I continue to be impressed with the dedication and the hard work and the thoughtfulness of members, community members who serve on commissions, like the Citizens Environmental You certainly are doing it for the money, and I'm not sure that the glory we give you presenting, you know, to us is adequate for your hard work. So, again, thank you very much. I look forward especially to the additional proposals that will be coming, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Danielle, on behalf of the citizens of DeKalb and on behalf of the city council, I commend you as chair of the environmental commission, but having attended a number of your meetings, seen the myriad of issues that you are discussing and talk about, and your folks are so passionate, I do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving along to 2B on the agenda, our DeKalb Public Library FY 2017 Annual Report by Director, Executive Director Emily Faulkner.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm excited to give you all an update on the library and what we've been able to achieve in 2017. I'm going to start off with some of our more behind-the-scenes things and move more towards what the public saw in 2017, just to give you a little update on what we've been doing. You should have gotten the financial report as mandated by the law recently, so you should be able to look that through also. In 2017, one of the things that we did was we revised the organizational structure to match the needs of the new building and prioritize patron-facing positions. To do that, we moved a number of back-of-house positions to be direct service to better serve our patrons. We rewrote job descriptions and hired for multiple positions. Between April and December of 2017, we hired for six of our eight management-level positions and filled quite a few other positions as people retired or moved on to pursue other opportunities. Of the 49 part-time and full-time employees currently working at the library, 15, including myself, started working at DKPL in 2017, and seven of the existing employees were promoted to new roles. So, we had 22 of 49 have taken on new positions or joined us entirely. While a few people are still quite new and learning the ropes, we are going into 2018 with an enthusiastic staff that's focused on customer service and on sharing library services and materials widely throughout the community. We spent a good part of 2017 reviewing policies, workflows, and procedures. We conducted a major cleaning out of our patron database to ensure that we had only up-to-date patron information. This is a long process, but it saves us money and it gives us an opportunity to focus on people who are current patrons as opposed to those who may have come and moved away. So, that was undertaken early on in 2017. We've also had each department do a time-use study and begun the process of creating or updating their workflows to ensure that our time is used for the best experience possible for our patrons and that we have the best practices in place. The library board has reviewed and updated more than a dozen policies, along with a completely revised personnel manual in 2017. After careful review, we also decided to outsource our IT department to provide improved internal service and dedicate additional staff to front-facing positions. Additionally, we've taken steps to bring our accounting in-house in order to have a better, more up-to-date information available about the state of our finances at any time. In 2017, our financial reports were only available several weeks after the conclusion of each month, and we're hoping that our new system, once in place, will allow for more timely information about our financial situation at any given point in time. Additionally, each member of our management team was consulted about their departmental goals and expectations, with the requirement that each of those goals and expectations be tied to a facet of our strategic plan so that we could work on achieving those goals over the course of the year. That's provided a roadmap for achieving the strategic plan as it enters its final year. In 2017, we also finished the construction on the building. I know it was largely complete when I came onboard, but actually, there were several fairly major parts that were outstanding until September of this year. So, in September, we were able to finally wrap up the final issues and receive our certificates of completion on the building and finish the payment to those contractors who are still waiting for that. We've also now completed both a full year in the new building and a full fiscal year in the building, which means it's possible to better analyze our numbers from 2017 to make budget decisions going forward, as those will be based on actual numbers instead of the estimates we've had to use for the past two years. So, we now actually know how much it costs to heat and cool the building, how much it costs to keep it open, et cetera, which we didn't have before. Moving on to some things that were more public-facing, we spent much of 2017 preparing for our new website. As of this week, the new look of the website is available, along with our new logo, so if you go check that out. We're pulling information now and updating the content, so the content and the look didn't come quite at the same time, but hopefully, by next week, we'll have everything all together and you'll be able to see everything. The intent there was to get a new site that would be easier to navigate and easier to read, more visible for people who have visual impairments than the previous version. Our main focus in 2017 has been on programming for adults, teens, and youth. We've been able to use our expanded space to increase the number of programs for our patrons. In 2017, we had approximately 1,500 individual programs that were produced by the library for the people of DeKalb. This is in addition to the daily work of providing reference assistance in person, by phone, and through email, circulating hundreds of thousands of materials, and maintaining our collection. Our summer reading program was expected to attract 1,000 children. We broke through that previous record with 1,500 children participating. We offer approximately 15 children's activities a week. Storytimes and craft activities are particularly popular, along with dozens of special events and programs for kids throughout the year. Our Clark and Arlene there tree room is also a very popular location for parents of young children to congregate. Over this year, we've added some adult-sized tables for parents who are asking for laptop space or a place to meet with their friends and have conversations, and we've had quite a few patrons tell us that they've made friends with other regular visitors when they're bringing their children there to the only free and accessible play space in DeKalb. Our teen programs and teen space are also proving to be very popular, especially on days when District 428 closes earlier, has an institute day, which is approximately twice a month. In order to serve our teens, we've been offering multiple programs throughout the library on those days in different locations so that they can be not only in the teen room, but also have other things going on around the building. We often have 50 or 60 teens using the library at a time after school, and have had so much success with our teen advisory group that we've had to split it in two, one for middle schoolers and one for high schoolers, so that they can each advise us about what they'd like to see for teens and tweens at the library. Adult programming has been particularly well-received this year. In addition to our many book clubs, resume help sessions, and 3D printing classes, we've been increasing the number of programs aimed at bringing in interested adults. One of the most popular programs was cat yoga, which was done in conjunction with Tails, who brought some of their adorable cats and kittens to stroll among yoga participants in the hopes of being adopted. We've repeated that several times and have another one coming up soon because of popular demand. In 2017, we also focused our, increased our focus on teaching the use of library databases, especially those that help nonprofits looking for grant funding, and those used for genealogy research. We were happy to be the host site for Kishawaki College's English Language Class for learner, English Language Learners, in addition to the library's own classes for new English speakers, and a summertime drop-in conversation class to allow those students to practice, which was done in conjunction with the free lunch program offered by the Methodist Church next door to us, so that the parents whose children were there having a free lunch would possibly be able to come over and have some activities for the adults as well. This year, we started a series of after-hours programs to provide a destination-type feel to the library. These events have featured the NIU Steel Band, Arkham Music House, and a presentation on Gwendolyn Brooks featuring the NIU Jazz Quintet, among others. These have been popular, and we hope to offer more after-hours events in 2018. Our large all-ages programs bring hundreds of people to downtown DeKalb. This year, we welcomed the community to join us in viewing the solar eclipse, hosted a science-themed steam day celebrating all things scientific, through the PopCon convention celebrating people's love of popular culture, and reprised our popular Eight Countries in One Day programs, which introduced attendees to the food, crafts, and culture of 16 different countries around the world. We're looking forward to the March 24th World of Reading Event, which will offer crafts, programs, costumes, and fun related to books and reading. I'm still working on my costume. I'm leaning towards Fancy Nancy, but you never know, but I hope you'll join us Saturday, March 24th, from 10 to 2:00. It should be a really good time for all ages. Beyond the programs that we offer, our expanded space also allows us to offer community groups a place to meet. In 2017, we had one lovely wedding. We have another one planned for 2018. We also had our meeting rooms used 750 times by external groups for town hall meetings with elected representatives, homeschool drama clubs, Girl Scout meetings, AYSO soccer sign-ups, National Novel Writing Month writing sessions, city council planning meetings, and dozens of other events. These meeting spaces are offered free of charge to groups who meet our requirements and open their sessions to the public, or for a nominal fee to those who wish to remain private. Beyond our doors, we hope to get out into the community and reach people who may not come into the library or may not be able to get to us easily. In addition to our outreach services, which brings books directly to a number of retirement homes and individuals who are homebound, based on their interests and needs, and our connection with the Talking Books Center for the Blind, which helps people who have visual impairments get books on an easy, usable reading device, we also try to get out for everybody. In 2017, we did a direct mail piece to every address in DeKalb, letting people know the services they can receive, including notary services, disc cleaning, in addition to our better-known library services such as eBooks, online databases, and homework help, and sign language storytimes. We also have a monthly radio spot on WLBK where we let people know about upcoming events. Every other week this summer, we went to the farmer's market and had a booth there, where I saw Kate quite a few times, actually, when she was coming through. We visited every school in District 428, as well as St. Mary's, for regular visits at their fairs, festivals, and teacher training days, where the library provides training on resources for educators. The library does a regular storytime at Panera and one at the Early Learning Development Center, as well as collaborating with Camp Power to reach kids who might not make it into the library otherwise. In 2017, we had booths at the International Student Expo, the Chamber of Commerce Expo, Target's Big Night Out, and the YMC Halloween Bash. In 2017, we also piloted the, piloted having programs offered in Huntley Park. That was a production of Julius Caesar that was very well-received, and we've lined them up again for another production in 2018. The library also holds an important part in the community and participates in multiple initiatives related to literacy and place building for DeKalb. In 2017, we were participants in hashtag proudly DeKalb, the Money Smart, Money Smart Week Steering Committee, the DeKalb County Nonprofit Partnership Steering Committee, the Bookcase Project, the Development of the Chamber of Commerce's Essential Skills Workshop Program, NIU's First Year Experience, the Initial Stages of the Antiglennorth Revitalization Plan, Proposals for a STEM Center in DeKalb, and many others. That's the majority of what we did in 2017. Just to give you a little head of what we're doing in 2018, I was trying to decide on what to talk about, and I'm picking my three favorites. So, the first is that we have a sound studio, which has been installed. The equipment is beginning to arrive, thanks to a grant from the Farney-Worlitzer Foundation, and we hope to have everything ready to go soon and a curriculum written by summertime. Having a sound studio available for public use will allow our patrons to create music recordings, podcasts, oral history interviews, and similar things, either for personal use or potentially to share with the world. We'll also be offering classes in video and audio editing, getting started in the music business, and providing software for patrons to use outside of the studio itself, so people who are interested in doing that kind of sound recording will have a place to go and a way to edit the materials that they create. Our laser cutter's in the process of being installed. Once we get proper ventilation set up, we'll be able to offer classes to the public in its use. It's a 60-watt laser cutter that'll be able to cut acrylic and metal, to etch glass, metal, or other materials, and we'll be offering classes in design and fabrication, which helps people envision a world wherein they can do jobs potentially that involve manufacturing. And the thing that I'm going to be spending the most of my time on in 2018 is strategic planning. 2018 is the final year of our current strategic plan, and so we intend to do public input sessions, both in person and online, to ascertain the needs and wants of the DeKalb community, along with staff and library board goal-setting, so that we have a roadmap for the next few years. In conclusion, it's been a very busy and fulfilling year at the DeKalb Public Library and a very nice return to my hometown. It's been a lot of fun getting to know all of you and coming back home. I do have a fantastic team working for me. Each staff member has been dedicated to the ideals of the public library and is interested in serving the people of DeKalb. I'd like to thank city council and the city staff for the warm welcome and the assistance you've given me over this past year. Having the elected officials and city employees to help me out has been incredibly useful and helpful to me and my staff. If you haven't been in the library lately, I'd like to welcome you all to come. I'd be happy to give anybody a tour or just, you know, come and poke around. You don't have to say that you're there. We do have something for everyone and a lot of things that people might not expect. So, that is the conclusion of my report. Are there questions from the council?
Prior to opening this up to any questions, I would like you to stick around, Emily, and thank you for that report. It sure sounds like there's so much activity, and it's a wonderful treasure we have here in DeKalb, the DeKalb Public Library.
Thank you.
It was no secret several weeks ago when I indicated to this city council and to the citizens of DeKalb that because of the special tax levy instituted in 2015 that called upon DeKalb taxpayers to assist DeKalb Public Library in the final construction of its new facility, that we needed to make the citizens and the taxpayers of DeKalb whole. We needed to get that money back to them. It was also very clear, excellent media coverage, that I felt very strongly that the tax levy needed to be rolled back, because that tax levy was approved by this city council in 2015 for a specific purpose. My stance is no different tonight than it was several weeks ago. As you're aware, and again, has been reported, I called upon your board chair, Wendell Johnson, and you to visit with me. We talked about a number of things as you move forward, as you address, as the library aboard addresses the tax levy and the abatement of those taxes paid by the taxpayers. And I must commend you for the warm cooperative spirit that you have shown me. At that time, however, I felt that it would be in the best interest of the citizens of the City of DeKalb for the library board to consider holding a special meeting a week ago to address this issue and to perhaps to consider rolling back a partial abatement of those taxes. I understand that there were some problems and a quorum could not be reached. So, here we sit tonight, no different than we did two weeks ago, three weeks ago, four weeks ago. And believe me, I am not going to throw the gauntlet down. I am not attempting to be confrontational. It was my understanding, and I noticed a few people would like to speak to the abatement and the tax issue tonight. It was my understanding that you would make a few brief comments. I would not expect you to respond to any of the comments that might be made tonight, but would you care to share where we are as it relates to what you feel I and this city council feel, or at least I feel comfortable in and saying a couple of weeks ago, and where your board feels you need to be to begin that process of that tax abatement back to the taxpayers and a rollback of that tax levy percentage?
Sure. I'm not sure that I'm going to be able to give you much more information, because I don't have any, I don't have any new information. My board has made it very clear to me that they do not wish to bring up any sort of conversation about abatement or changing of the levy until we've actually got the funds from the state. I think that's because the last time they were waiting for a check from the state, it took more than two years for it to arrive. So, we're sort of in that same position now. I've turned in all the paperwork. I got a set of corrections back from them. I then turned in the corrected paperwork, and I have not heard anything from the state about when to expect that check. It could arrive anytime from tomorrow to, I mean, 2020, really. So, until that happens, my board hasn't given me any further direction about what they expect to be doing. The conversation about a partial abatement, I got your directive to try to set up a special meeting, and I did do that, although we weren't able to find enough people to come to that meeting. But I also didn't have any information about what a partial abatement would include, because we hadn't actually discussed that previously. So, I don't have any information about what that might look like, but it's my understanding that we would have needed to have that meeting last week in order for you to approve it tonight, in order for it to get to the county by Thursday. So, my understanding with the tax levy is that it won't be something that we could address again until our next budget comes up this fall.
That was my reason for asking you to have that special meeting, so that this city council, if it was, if it felt appropriate, could take some action on that tax levy. But because of a lack of quorum, obviously, you could not meet. I appreciate your candor. I appreciate your response tonight. Prior to turning it over to a couple of folks in our audience who would like to address the issue of the library, I'd like to turn it over to any comments. I know Alderman Fagan, you had a comment.
Yeah, I'd get a couple. It's a beautiful building, beautiful library. I mean, it's an asset in DeKalb. Couple things. When you come to bring your reports, we do our homework beforehand, so if you could give us something you're writing before-
Yeah, I'm sorry, but that was a misunderstanding between me and Ray about when you needed to have it available. I thought you needed it tonight, and I didn't realize you should have had it beforehand. I apologize for that.
Yeah, and we do do our homework, believe it or not. So, the other thing is, when talking about the abatement and the return of money, I've had a lot of people reach out to me on this that don't normally reach out to me, and I've got a lot of people to reach out to me that reach out to me normally. But with that said, the main concern is, I believe there was four proposals that was brought up at, I believe it was the meeting, the meeting the night that we had our-
January 24th.
Right. And so, and there's some confusion on what people are looking at and thinking of saying, wait, they promised this, and I believe the mayor was trying to express, what, are you going to, will you get the money? Will you abate that and return the money? That's the question. That's what everybody's been asking.
Right. So, that meeting was intended for me to get some direction from my board about where they expected to go when we did eventually get the money. Those four proposals were meant to be, they weren't meant to be completely accurate. They were, a lot of those are estimates, because I hadn't been able to find the information yet to get all the, like, exact, specific numbers. So, there was more for me to find the direction from the board about what direction they wanted to go when we finally did get the money from the state. So, the indication that I got from them was that they intended to somehow give back the money that had been borrowed for this purpose, and then to set an operating budget based on the library's needs after that point, which, when I reread the resolution from 2015, is also what it appears to say to me. So, that, as far as I understand it, is what their intention is. But again, they're not going to be bringing it up again until we start our budget process later on in 2018.
So, we're not, we're not going to get a clear answer on anything, not even intentions?
That, I mean, as far as I know, that's their intentions. That's, I am not planning on, there's nothing for me to bring to them to discuss at this point. I've already asked what their intentions were, so I don't have any additional money. There's nothing for them to make a decision on.
From future funds?
Not for me. I don't know, until we start working on the budget process, I don't have information from the banks yet about what their requirements are. I haven't been able to look through all of our budgeting needs. So, no, we haven't. The budgeting process, I don't know how long you guys spend on the city budget, but I believe you've already started, correct?
Right.
Yeah, so we haven't started quite yet, but it's going to be, you know, several months of work in order for me to get to the point where I can know exactly what we'll need.
Any other thoughts? Alderman Verbic, or Alderman, either? You guys fight over it.
So, you mentioned you hired, was it 22 additional staff?
15 people were hired for positions. We moved things around, but yes, there weren't 15 additional staff hired. I believe we have a similar number of people who are there at hours as we had before.
Okay, because that was going to be my question, is when we toured the library prior to the opening, is my understanding, actually, there would be potentially a reduction in staff because of all the automation within the library?
That has not proven to be the case. We are, at the moment, we have the minimum number of recommended staff for a library of our size. It's sort of the bare minimum for full-time equivalent, which is 29 full-time equivalent. It would be recommended for a growing library that we would have 40. So, no, and the automation has, I'm not sure where that came from. That would not be the case. We have twice as many service points and three times as much space as we had before.
Do other, sorry, do other libraries in that you're comparing the staffing levels with, did they spend that, the amount of money on automation that the DeKalb-
That's a state standard. That's what they put out and recommend for, based on our population size. I will say, the only thing that I know about staffing in terms of what other libraries who are looking to spend a similar amount of money on automation are that when we have libraries coming through who are looking to do major renovation projects of a similar type, their questions often include something along the lines of how we, how we integrated our staff with the massive number of new people that we hired in order to deal with an expansion of this size. So, they're expecting, when they come in, they're expecting to expand their staff substantially, whereas ours has not expanded at all.
Alderman Verbic?
Great work all the way around at the library. We had a very productive goal session there. Very appropriate room for the work that we needed to do, so thank you. But I do echo the concern that, again, there were promises made, and we need to have some type of plan, and without waiting, I believe, your board could do the responsible thing and simply say, we intend to do this, and tell the community that, so we can really avoid any kind of negativity or misinformation. Thank you.
Alderman Jacobson?
In hearing the comment that you're not entirely sure where it came from, I can appreciate that, because you weren't here. I can tell you where that comment came from. It came from your predecessor, who both came in front of the council and on multiple occasions, both at the library and in discussions, made the claim that there would be no need for any additional staff based on the automation. And that was a question that certainly did come up as part of the expansion. How, especially as it related to the levy, is there any, I mean, there were some very specific questions asked. Is there any possibility the state would not make that money? And we were promised absolutely not. It was appropriated, and it was on its way. It was just a matter of a time. We found that to be untrue. We were told, are the taxpayers going to get 100% abatement of the levy? And we were promised absolutely, on the record at city council, that they would be abated as soon as the check came through. as soon as the check came through. That's turned out not necessarily to be the entirely full truth. The discussion was, would the levy be dropped back down to where it was once the money came through to cover the loan that we had put up or to cover the loans that were needed to get the library? And the answer was, absolutely. And that, we find out now a couple of years, to not be entirely true. I mean, there's certainly a growing sector, I think, of the community that is becoming distrustful of the library and your board. I don't know if that's entirely fair. The reality is, there were many, many promises made on the record in front of this council to entice us to agree to the change in the levy. And now we're finding out, three or four years down the road, that those promises, at least that there's thoughts that they're being, going to be modified, or that the abatement is going to change somehow, or that that refund may not come in. Again, those were promises that the Library Board, in fairness, prior to you, accepted. Those were comments made by your predecessor, the executive director, to the council and the taxpayers, that we all expect to be honored at this point, that the community expects to be honored. And I appreciate that you feel that you may need some more staff. I appreciate that it seems to be easy and low-hanging fruit to keep that levy high. Those promises were made. I, as a council member, it certainly sounds like the mayor and several others on this board that I've talked to, expect those promises to be honored. And there is no other wiggle room or maybes or ifs, ands, or buts. We expect those promises to be honored to the letter as they were promised to us. And I think that's incumbent upon us at this point to share with you, to bring back to your board, that there is no gray area for us. It's black and white. You owe the taxpayers back that money, figure out how to pay for it.
Any other comments? Emily, I appreciate, excuse me, Kate?
I agree with Alderman Jacobson, but I would also like, I know, you make laughs. But I also want to add my thanks for the clear efforts you are making to expand library services, to expand the kind of people, the numbers of people that you serve. I don't want people to forget that the library can also have unexpected impacts. I happened to go into the library yesterday to drop off a book. I was looking at new books. And there was a book there on what to say when people have suffered a loss. And I had just heard news about a friend whose wife had died. I thought, oh, my gosh. Who could have thought that the library would meet my need exactly at that moment? And that's one of those unexpected benefits of the library. And so the library is more than just the beautiful building. So thank you for everything you do, and I hope and expect that we can come to resolution on the levy issue.
As I concluded my remarks several weeks ago, I said something that the mayor is repeating tonight. I have full confidence that the DeKalb Public Library Board will do the right thing. If anything needs to be done, it's just simply some clarification. If that is nothing more than a statement from the board at your next regular meeting, that when you do receive the 1.1 million, which I understand is the remaining amount the State of Illinois owes the DeKalb Public Library, that once that is done, the process will begin to make the taxpayers of the City of DeKalb whole, and that there will be a rollback of the tax abatement initially instituted in 2015. Is that clear?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you, Emily. I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Let's move along to item number three, and I am going to give those folks in the audience who would like to speak to the library issue some time to do that. There are no mayor's appointments this evening, so let's move along to public participation. If someone has registered to speak on an item not listed on the agenda, you're more than welcome to come forward. However, given the fact that we have several folks who have indicated they would like to speak to the library issue, I'd like to call on those folks now. And the first one is Mac McIntyre. Mac?
I appreciate what I heard from the council and you, Jerry, tonight, because I think that's important. DeKalb needs, really needs, some good news. And the library, keeping its word and rolling back the tax levy, would get regional attention. I promise you that. Because it's not something that government does very often, if at all. Keep their word and roll back the tax levy. That would send a message that DeKalb is something special, that it's something where you'd want to do business in because you can count on the governmental units to keep their word. I'm troubled, though, because there was staff hired, and that's in past tense. Where did those funds come from? When I look at the library levy, I have to wonder if the half-million-dollar construction levy was used to hire some of those personnel. And then I wonder how you're going to take care of the additional pension obligation of 22 new hires in full-time positions on the library. You guys are, have dedicated your real estate tax revenue to pension obligations now, and there seems to be genuine concern among most of you on the council that it's not ever going to be enough. And so when another unit that the City of DeKalb has fiduciary responsibility for adds to their payroll, adds to their pension obligation, that's something that you guys didn't plan for in your budget hearings. And so I think it's important to know, how was the $500,000 of this year's levy used? How much of it is available to pay back the loan? And it's extremely important that the money be used that way. I became concerned when I heard that there were four options, and only one of them included keeping their word. The other three were plans, additional plans for spending money. That's when I became concerned. And I don't, you know, it's been suggested that that's a negative. That's not a negative. That's not a negative. That's a concern as to how it's going to go. And, you know, I talked with Bob Pritchard about this, or I should say, Grace has, and I have in earlier conversations. He's got the same recollection that Dave Jacobson has, that I have, that there was promises made, and it wasn't just by Decover, it was by the Library Board president, that this building was going to be designed in such a manner, and the technology was going to be used in such a manner that was not going to add to the payroll and the operational costs of the library. That's just as important of a promise as the abatement of the tax. And for now, then, there to be used state average figures. No, this is a special library. Anybody that walks by that library, anybody that drives by that library, anybody that goes in that library knows it's a special place. And it was designed to not add to the payroll, to not add to the operating expenses. So I hope the library keeps their word, and I hope the city council uses their powers to make sure that that levy is rolled back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mac. Former Mayor Bessie Chronopoulos also would like to speak to the library issue.
Is Emily still here? Yes, she is. Emily, I appreciate your report. As an educator, retired educator of 39 years, there is nothing that pleases me more than a viable, energetic library, right then? And that's fantastic, and we want something premier for our community. And it saddens me that there's a gray shadow cast over this wonderful facility because of this particular issue. Allow me to, I'm not the fiduciary person, I'm not the finance person, as I explained to Alderman Fagan on this, but I think after 26 years of public service and almost 70 years on the face of this earth, I've learned a few things. Okay, after your meeting, or during the time the council was meeting on the 24th, the Library Board was meeting, and some of us, you know, went over to that meeting and found out that there was this scenario of different items being presented, and kind of got me to wondering, why is that the case? Something is not correct here. Almost immediately, I think a day or two after, I immediately went to the mayor and presented him with the scenario and said, Mayor, something's not right here. We shouldn't be talking scenarios. We should be talking about when the return and the abatement is going to occur, period end of conversation. And I also recall that, two years prior, I did attend a Library Board meeting, and I had questioned, and I think I brought this up last time, I questioned, why are we going the levy, why are y'all going the levy route, not just TIF route? Well, you know, after a while, I went back and read the minutes from the council where, indeed, Dave, Alderman Jacobson, indeed, there was a promise made about how the monies would be returned and so on and so forth. And there was an excerpt in there from then-Finance Director Kathy Haley that mentioned something about the abatement taking place mid to late March. And I'm wondering, does that have an impact on the way the Library Board is thinking? They're thinking in their heads that that's the information that she gave in a public meeting. Do they have that in the back of their minds, and maybe that's why they think, oh, they can procrastinate on this abatement? I don't know. Got me. All I know is that when this was all developing, we asked to be on the agenda. Several of us citizens asked to be placed on the agenda at the city council so that the videotape can be shown where the promises were made and some other points could be made. We were refused because the mayor was promised, and it bothers me when the mayor is promised and that promise isn't adhered to, by golly, because you represent all the people in this community. The mayor was promised that this would be on the Valentine's Day, the 12th, the 214 meeting of the Library Board, and it was not. It was not placed on that agenda. That was purposeful, I think. And this is not, this is not easy to, it's not easy to do this. And then, the mayor was promised, and the council, that a special meeting might take place in order to discuss this. And that was pulled back because now we're told there wasn't a quorum? Give me a break. There's an agreement in place that is a lawful agreement in black and white that should be adhered to, that must be adhered to. And I'm amazed that our city attorney and our city manager are not doing everything in their power to make sure that they are protecting the rights of the taxpayers of this community. I'm appalled, absolutely appalled, and it is unforgivable. And you're placing these people in a very difficult position, and you're placing my mayor in a very difficult position. I don't know what else you can do, but I think it's time to start playing hardball. Anything and everything. If you need to call the state's attorney, do so. I also talked to, because the excuse is being given that the 1.1 mil has not come in yet, well, I ended up talking to several people in the state, and I was told that the 1.4 mil, not 1.4, excuse me, the 1.1 mil wood is in process, and that the Library Board does know that it's coming. You are aware of that. So I have, what's the reason? What's holding them back? Did they overspend? That needs to be looked into. This is much more complicated than I had thought previously.
Thank you, Bessie.
I'm so sorry that you're going through this.
Thank you for your comments. In defense of our staff, I, in the course of communicating with the Library Board chair on at least two or three occasions, relied on our city attorney. And Attorney Frieders was very helpful in giving me what our options are. The primary option, as I saw it, and as I sense I have some consensus on this city council, is that we are being very patient with the DeKalb Public Library Board. And if, in fact, that 1.1 million dollar comes in, we need post-haste treatment, if you will, by that Library Board to get that tax abatement in the process and to get that tax levy rollback. I will say this, that I feel very comfortable that the DeKalb Public Library Board will make the right decision and will do the right thing. Now, two people wanted to speak to the library. Dan, I see that you wanted to speak under public comment. Did you, did you want to speak to something other than was on the agenda? Okay, so this is the place now for anyone who'd like to speak to an item not on our regular agenda tonight, and Dan Kenny has indicated his interest in doing that. Dan?
Thank you. Dan Kenny, Birchwood Lane, DeKalb. I think we can all agree that we are living during difficult and troubling times. Mental health comes up over and over in discussions and in the news these days. So I wanted to take a minute tonight to say thank you to Chief Lowry and our DeKalb Police Department for their exceptional work last week, and what a week it was. As a former teacher and as a taxpayer, I want to thank our police department and their lead, as well as all the other support departments that came to the call of a domestic incident within 1,000 feet of a public school. An incident that could have become a tragedy if not handled properly. I commend the chief for his leadership and the high quality of professionalism, the four pillars, that they displayed during that extremely volatile situation. I know many hours of training and coordination went into the preparation of just such a scenario. The time came, and our police department and school district was ready and handled the situation with true professionalism. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. I talked to Chief Lowry myself, I think it was Friday, and I said, Gene, I hope you have a quiet weekend. Well, such was not the case until last night, I guess Sunday night, we had an incident. But I hope you did get some rest. And again, on behalf of the citizens of DeKalb, thank you for you and your force on those two incidents at least that you handled on Thursday and Friday of this past week. Thank you very much. Okay, item number F on the consent, this is the consent agenda? Excuse me, I'm sorry. Alderman Jacobson?
Again, I think it's worth mentioning as part and parcel of the library.
Again, I think it's worth mentioning as part and parcel of the library discussion that some of the angst and anger from the community is that, again, the reality is, in those four discussions, at least the way I read it, was that one of the discussions was whether or not to abate the amount of that $500,000 that was going into additional funding. The promise that was made was that they were going to pay back the taxpayers for that loan when they got the money. So again, there's still some confusion, even with those four options the library board is presenting. Again, this year's levy would have included significant interest and principal payments toward the next fiscal year's debt. So while I appreciate that there's a million still outstanding in terms of payments, again, all that additional debt has already been paid, so there's an amount being generated that isn't just taking that tax levy away, it's paying back the loan that the taxpayers gave, and I think that's getting confused in this situation. The reality that they should be taking any taxes when a large sum of that money has already come in, the vast majority of it, to pay for future year tax payments that don't exist, again, it isn't just that million they have to deal with. We were told as a council that that money would be fundraised for by this point. We were promised several million dollars in fundraising would have occurred to abate that money over time, and it's becoming pretty clear at this point that never occurred. So I think we need to go back and have some sort of discussion, reviewing our minutes, reviewing all of our meetings, to understand exactly what the promises that were that made, because I don't even think of those four discussions they're having that any of them even come close to meeting what was promised.
That may very well be, Dave, but believe me, it is no, it is, I am perfectly clear as to what the promises that were made in 2015. I am perfectly clear that we're going to make the taxpayers who paid whole. I am perfectly clear that the tax levy percentage instituted in 2015 will, in fact, be rolled back. And I would agree, none of that was included in the matrix that I saw that the board was presented on the 24th of January. But that is another story, if you will. That's another can of worms, if you will, that we may be talking about. But let's allow the library board to do the right thing, to abate that, to roll back that tax levy. If I've said it once, I've said it a half a dozen times tonight, I think we're headed in the right direction. I'm confident that the library board will do the right thing. One thing I did not add, and I think this is important for the taxpayers to know, that our Finance Director, Molly Talkington, has been asked to work very, very closely with Emily. The two of them have met, I don't know on how many occasions, since the mayor made his statement a few weeks ago, and I appreciate both of you getting together, because we need to be on that same page, if you will, and we need to make the citizens, the taxpayers of the City of DeKalb, whole on the DeKalb Public Library tax issue. Now, continuing on to our consent agenda, for the benefit of those watching at home and for the benefit of those in our audience tonight, as you know, the items listed on the consent agenda are enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion on these items unless requested by a council member, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda. I don't see any indication that anybody wants any of those removed, so let me read what the consent agenda encompasses. Number one, approval of city council minutes. Minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting of January 22, 2018. B, minutes of city council meeting of January 22, 2018. C, minutes of the Special Committee of the Whole Meeting of January 24, 2018. Number two, receive and file accounts payable and payroll through February 26, 2018 in the amount of $5,150,825.15. B, investment and bank balance summary through December 2017. Three, amendment of the 2018 schedule of meetings. And four, 2017 fee waivers report to council. I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I don't have four on my list, I apologize. What is number four?
Do we have that on the?
I don't have that on my agenda in front of me.
I have that.
Oh, that's yours.
This is, this is the one that, I have special reports on here. Was this something we, that may have been included in the last, last week's, or the last meeting we had?
It might have been. What is number four?
Number four, 2017 fee waivers report to council.
That is, that is not on this agenda.
That is not on this agenda. I'm sorry.
So the motion would be to approve without number four?
Right, without, without number four.
So moved.
Thank you, eagle-eyed. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Excuse me, roll call.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
I believe gremlins are playing the mayor's agenda. But please correct me if I read something here that's on this sheet and that's not on the.
Jerry, you know we have no hesitation in doing that.
Yes, that's correct. Okay, let's move on. Item G, items for separate action. Ordinance 2018-004, authorizing the establishment of tax increment financing interested parties' registries and adopting registration rules for such registries. This is second reading of this particular ordinance. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Our economic development planner, Jason Mitchnick, will speak to this item. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Before you this evening is the, the second reading for the Interested Parties Registry for the Central Business District, TIF. As I stated at our previous meeting, this is a requirement per the State of Illinois TIF statute. This is one of the things that the city would be required to do if it was to move forward with designation of the CBD TIF. However, with that being said, by voting in favor of this ordinance as it is drafted, it does not require or force the city to move forward with the designation of this TIF. It is just a matter of if the city is to do that, it is one of the requirements they would have to check off prior to doing so. Since the last meeting, I did have a chance to meet with the city clerk and go over the process of what that would look like for her to make me the designee. So applications that would come in for the Interested Parties Registry would come through the city clerk's office and then forwarded on to community development, and we would actually maintain the registry itself and then provide an updated copy back to the city clerk's office for those that are interested in the public for access to that. This evening, I'd also like to make a correction to a statement that I made at the previous meeting, which was the city did not have an Interested Parties Registry for the previous TIF districts. That was, that was incorrect. I was able to track down a 2,000 ordinance establishing an Interested Parties Registry for the central area TIF district, TIF 2, and then also, at that time, the city was considering some other TIF districts that were included in that registry. The, I am currently working on tracking down the most updated copy of that registry in order to continue to maintain that. So for members of the public that are interested in getting information, not just on the CBD TIF, but on the other TIF, if there are public notices that are issued for those TIF districts, they would, people could be able to sign up for those notices to be mailed to them as well. And with that, I would entertain any questions that you have this evening.
Yeah, there's been some question, and I, perhaps we'll have some, some discussion here, that, and I thought this was made clear on the first reading, that we approved. If we approve the registry, it doesn't commit this council in any way, shape, or form to establishing a new TIF or doing something with one of our old TIFs. Is that correct?
That is correct. However, if the, if the council at a future date decides that they would like to designate the TIF, this is one of the requirements that would, you would have to have done prior to that.
That was my next question. So we need to do this to even avail ourselves of further discussion on a new TIF?
That is correct. And the timing of this, really, looking at a standard format and timeline for a TIF designation, this is one of the first thing, first things that's done in order to create the registry so that people that are interested in following along with the process can be notified properly. This is us getting out as early as possible to provide some mechanism for, for the public to stay informed.
Okay, good. Now, open up to any discussion. Alderman Jacobson.
Now that we are aware and agree that there is obviously Interested Parties that have previously registered, will they be automatically transferred over to the new registry, or will they have to re-register now?
They would have to re-register because the application form that was previously filled out by them did not include, you actually have to stipulate which TIF districts that you want to be informed about. So they would, people that were on the previous registries would have to reapply for this registry.
Is there going to be any effort made to reach out and contact them, to let them know that there's a new TIF coming? Obviously, these are people that have designated and waved the flag saying, "We're interested in TIF. I think it's incumbent upon us," if that's the case, "that we at least make some minimal form of effort to reach out and say, 'Hey, there's a new TIF coming. If you'd like to be on it, we'd appreciate you doing it this way.'"
Absolutely. That's not legally required, but we absolutely could do that.
Thank you.
I agree. That should totally be done.
What was that, Sue?
I agree with what Alderman Jacobson said, that we should be Interested Parties and let them know if they've already registered.
Right. You were a little bit taken aback by the fact that you were called upon to do certain things within this bailiwick. Are you comfortable now, after having met with Jason, that what you need to do?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, good. That's important. Alderman Verbic.
While I agree that this registry does not commit us to moving forward with a TIF, I believe it sends a pretty clear message to those that may be interested that we are intending to move forward with the TIF, especially considering that we have a TIF registry in place now. I won't take too much of our time this evening just to say that until we have our financial house in order, I am not ready to support a new TIF.
But Alderman Verbic, how can we, how can you say that by voting on this, that we're tipping our hand that we want a new TIF? I, I just, you know, you and I have talked about this a little bit. I, I think that to at least give, put ourselves in a position where we can explore what it is that we need to do as a council, that we need to, to pass this. So I'd hate to give the impression that just simply because we're passing this, on a registry, that we're not, or that we're indicating that we're going to start a new TIF. Just so you and I are clear.
It engages a lot of staff time, though, so I believe that we're, we're sending a pretty clear message that we're ready to engage the staff time on this effort. We intend to move forward. What's the point of doling out a registry if we, six months from now, say, "Well, we're not doing it. We can just simply carry out the registry at that point."
Anybody? Alderman Finuchin.
Well, I've said before that I'm very skeptical of the need to move forward a new TIF, but I understand the need for the process to move along till we get to that point where we have enough information when we make that decision to move forward. So this is just a necessary step along the process, because if I recall, Jason, that there has to be some kind of a time lag between the approval of registry and actually moving forward with a TIF, if I recall that from your discussion a couple of weeks ago.
There's several timelines that are required. The one that is most important, though, is the timing between when the redevelopment plan is made public. So that would include the eligibility and the actual redevelopment plan. That has to be on file with the city clerk for a period of time before the joint review board would be able to hold their meeting.
And again, as I said, I just see this as one of those necessary steps, whether or not we go ahead. And we, we may learn from some of these interested parties reasons for or against the creation of a new TIF. So, you know, I'm willing to vote for this step tonight, just as part of the process as we go ahead.
We had also talked about the importance of staff to stay up to speed on what the state is doing as it relates to TIF regulations, and just this afternoon, I received this email from the Illinois Municipal League that Tuesday, February 27, that's tomorrow, the General Assembly's TIF Reform Task Force is scheduled to meet. You're probably aware of that already, but let's, again, let's just stay on top of that so that we, we have a pretty good handle on what the state, what changes they're making, if any, in this as we move forward. So, any further discussion on this? It's been moved and seconded, that we, that we provide second reading. Final action on ordinance 2018-004.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
No.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
No.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Okay, item number two. I just wanted to make sure that nobody in our audience wanted to speak to that item. They did not. Okay. Ordinance number, item number two. Ordinance 2018-002, amending Chapter 64 Smoking Regulations, Section 64.01 Definitions, Section 64.02 Prohibition of Smoking in Enclosed Public Places, and Section 64.04 Smoking-Free Perimeters. First reading, motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Speaking to this is our Community Development Director, Joellen Charlton. Joellen?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Pursuant to your direction at your January 22 meeting, this item is coming back to you for formal consideration. It started with a request from Alderman Jacobson and Alderman Verbic that the council consider amending the outdoor smoking regulations approved by the city back in 2014. Specifically, if approved as drafted in your packet tonight, the city code would be amended to remove the prohibition of smoking on outdoor patios. So the exact language in the ordinance is provided with underscores and strike-throughs as to what would be changed in that, and that is presented on page two of your report. Page three also provides the history. I don't think I need to go through all of the documentation that we provided before. I assume the council has some conversation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Joellen. Before we turn it over to council for discussion, we have a number of people who want to speak to this ordinance consideration. Bill Elecno.
Thank you. Bill Elecno, DeKalb, Illinois. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, you may be familiar with the song, "Smoke gets in your eyes." Well, it also gets in your lungs and causes respiratory problems, cardiovascular diseases, increased asthma attacks in children, and in some cases, the outdoor levels in outdoor patios exceed federal EPA standards for ambient air pollution for both patrons and employees who are at the greatest risk. In addition to well-documented public health problems, there are at least three other reasons for not changing the smoking regulations for outdoor patios. First of all, there are no compelling reasons to change the current regulations. Any claims of lost revenue due to the regulations are anecdotal at best and undocumented. In fact, it's conceivable that allowing any smoking in outdoor- it's conceivable that allowing any smoking in outdoor patios may result in lost revenue due to reduced patronage by non-smokers. Secondly, it would be a bad precedent to change the regulations and especially to allow individual establishments to decide if they want to enforce the changes. The original ban on smoking in outdoor patios was approved by the city council with community input. To now second guess that decision without any concrete evidence of support is just bad policy. I'm sure you wouldn't let businesses decide if they want to follow city fire codes or other local rules related to public safety, would you? Also, overturning the current rules is contrary to the city's sustainability plan, which the council approved just a few years ago. Finally, did you know that in addition to DeKalb, over 450 local jurisdictions in the United States, 28 of them in Illinois, have enacted laws banning all smoking in outdoor dining areas? This is in addition to four states and the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico. DeKalb is by no means alone in its goal to protect the public's health, and it should be applauded for its efforts to be at the forefront of public health and safety. Please, let's not take a step backward by changing these regulations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill. Bessie Krenopoulos, did you want to speak to this smoking ordinance?
It'll be very short. Dave, this is one that I'm not going to agree with you on. I agree with everything the previous speaker said, from the first to the last word that he said. Years, a few years ago, DeKalb did a phenomenal thing in passing a premier groundbreaking ordinance to protect the health of the public. It was the right thing to do then. It's the right thing to just leave it alone. Just leave it alone. If a business depends on this for their prosperity, maybe they better consider their food and their service before they consider this. That's all I have to say. Just leave it alone. It's fine.
Thank you. Dan Kenny, you'd like to speak to this?
I was on the Environmental Commission in 2014 when this ordinance passed. And as I said before, in 2014, it was also true. We took this very seriously. There was a lot of research done, and we based our decision on facts with our recommendation to the city to put this ordinance in place. And it reminds me of a story when I first started to get involved with community advocacy that I heard about a group back before there was a state law against smoking in public places. There was a group of individuals that had formed a organization to try to get the law passed. And they went to see their state representative, and they had all of their facts, all the public health issues, everything laid out. They did an excellent presentation to their representative stating exactly why it's dangerous for the public health. He listened politely, and then he said, "Well, I agree completely with you. You're absolutely right. Smoking in public places is a risk to the public's health. However, I have a lot of bar owners and tavern owners in my jurisdiction who have called me and said they want me to vote this down. So, even though I know it's against public health and against the facts, I'm going to vote this down. You have all the facts before you, researched and documented. I know our community can count on you to vote in favor of protecting the public health instead of special interest."
Any discussion? Alderman Fanouken.
Well, again, I was the leading council member when this came forth in 214, in 2014. Again, it germinated within the Environmental Commission when I was chair, when Bill and Dan were both members. It took a lot of work on our part. I want to remind people that the city DeKalb passed no smoking indoor ordinance two years prior to the state. And again, we've taken the lead to protect public health, again, up to this point. I have a short video that I'd like to ask Brian to run at this time, please.
A federal court has ordered Philip Morris USA, Laura Lard, RJ Reynolds Tobacco, and Altria to make this statement about the health effects of secondhand smoke.
Turn the volume up a little bit, would you, Byron?
Secondhand smoke kills over 38,000 Americans each year. Secondhand smoke causes lung cancer and coronary heart disease in adults who do not smoke. Children exposed to secondhand smoke are at an increased risk for sudden infant death syndrome, SIDS, acute respiratory infections, ear problems, severe asthma, and reduced lung function. There is no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke.
Thank you, Brian.
Any further discussion?
What was the source of that?
It said it right at the beginning.
Alderman Verbic.
I want to thank you for the-
Where was the source of that information? So, it's vetted and legit?
The tobacco companies. That's what-
I say the tobacco companies didn't do that. Again, without citing your sources, it's very difficult to have an actual discussion based on what court order, who provided that info for, for us. Was that provided in the backup? When I've asked to have things discussed at city council and had backup, I've been told I can't have those things put in. So, I'm just a little confused at how the process works.
You called on me?
Sorry.
Yes, Alderman Verbic, I did call on you, and that was Alderman Jacobson down there, but-
I was not throwing my voice.
I think he was responding to Alderman Fanouken, yes. Okay, Alderman Verbic.
I completely understand the speakers and Alderman Fanouken's point and others that have approached me as to why to keep this, this ordinance for DeKalb. I really appreciate that. But at the end of the day, I did not bring this forward as a result of economic impact. I did not bring this forward for any reason other than the patrons, the residents, and business owners in the sixth ward of DeKalb said, "We believe this is unfair," for this and this and this reason. So, we've continued to work on this, and we have come up with a compromise, if, if the council would, would be interested, in that we maintain our city ordinance against patio smoking until 9:00 PM.
Are you, is that an amendment to this motion, or you just want to discuss this now? Let's, you just want to discuss it now?
I'd like to discuss it before I would make that amendment. Thank you.
Yeah. Alderman Noriko.
I think it's well-known, certainly by my fellow council members, that I wholeheartedly agree that we should not smoke. We should not have to be exposed to smoke. But I also, you know, recognize competing interests. And in the spirit of trying to come, look at a compromise, I'm willing to support an amendment if Alderman Verbic comes forward with it, thinking that it is far less likely that children will be exposed to the smoke at that time. Individuals can, you know, come up with other alternatives than exposure at that time. I don't necessarily think that is ideal, but we seldom face ideal situations. So, I would support the amendment.
Alderman Markwart.
So, I'm going to take over Dave's role as not agreeing with you, Kate.
And since I do agree with her.
Earlier, and then also on this one. I had heard about nine o'clock, you know, as a possible solution. And you bring up the fact about kids not being out at nine o'clock. Goodness gracious, during the summer, it's light at nine o'clock. There's a lot of kids out at nine o'clock whose parents like the food at Fatty's at nine o'clock, who are there to watch a band. The timing part doesn't make any sense to me, along with the enforcement of this, creating a nightmare for our police officers who, as we saw last week, are dealing with many other things other than trying to figure out who is actually smoking. Are there three other people, or two other people, or however many are witnesses, witnesses you need to prosecute something like this? And we're wasting our time on something that, to be quite honest, is a health risk that some people don't get sick from cigarette smoking because they have their genes or whatever. They can tolerate it. But 80% of the population or higher can't tolerate it. And it creates extreme health issues for them. There are other pollutants in our society that also create similar effects, which is why we have regulations on exhaust. You have a muffler on your car. You have, you know, regulations at factories to clean the air before it goes, goes out. That's why we have these regulations. And this is a minor case where it's not really affecting, I'm losing my train of thought, but, you know, we should leave it well enough alone. That it's, it's the way it is. The people, the bar owners, restaurant owners that I talked to said that they were fine leaving it. So, that's the way I'm going to go.
Alderman Fanouken.
Well, you know, it isn't just the health of the patrons. It's also the health of the employees that we're concerned about also. You know, nine o'clock, well, after nine o'clock, now you're going to subject those employees to this smoke. You know, it's been documented both this time and when we had a discussion last time that the percentage of revenue has increased since a no smoking patio, or no smoking on the patios has been both in the locations with patios and without, but at a greater increase rate for the locations with patios, which means more people are going out onto those patios and smoking, or not smoking. And that's particularly interesting in light of the decreased enrollment at NIU, where we would expect a fair number of those customers would be coming from otherwise. So, it's a public health issue. At, the last time was, you know, talked about as a economic issue, but we've shown through documented information that the sales at those places actually increased since the implementation. So, I think that just confirms the validity of our policy of no smoking on patios.
Alderman Noriko.
At the risk of seeming like I'm flip-flopping, which I probably am, and since I was originally inclined to vote no in any case, I think, you know, particularly Alderman Markwart's statement about, you know, having talked to some, you know, restaurant bar owners as well as, and frankly, I should have thought about this, the waitstaff, you know, the, the restaurant bar staff. So, I am going to go out on a limb and probably be cut off at the knees or whatever, but I'm going to vote no. And yes, I'm changing my mind, and, you know, Alderman Jacobson and I have once again hung up. It's an emergency.
It's been moved and seconded.
Really? Excuse me? Really? Again, this is part of my frustration with part of the argument, is when I hear comments like 80% of people can't handle it. These, these are false facts. These aren't realistic facts. You're not using data when four speakers get up in a row that are ultra-liberal politic-wise, and it is a goal of the politicians on the Democratic Party to get rid of it, even though it funds things like Medicaid and Medicare, and a significant amount of our sales tax revenue in DeKalb comes from smoking. Again, it's fact-based. It's when you put up videos that don't have any real cited source. It, someone says it came from someone. Those are part of my issues in, in this argument. Let's have a real argument. Let's look into these numbers. Let's realize that a lot of these numbers that were provided from, from us have been skewed by different restaurants opening up over that time. Let's delve into the data and not make things based on a very small set of unverified information. That's part of my, my reality. However, when you're looking at the special interests involved here, the special interests are our local business owners. They're all our local residents. Those are who are coming forward. And I, I don't know who you spoke to, Alderman Markwart. I spoke with probably 70 or 80% of our liquor licensees, and they felt strongly about the issue. The ones that didn't said they don't follow the law and smoke on their patios anyway, so it doesn't affect them anyway. So, there was not a single one of those bar owners that strongly said, "Yes, I want to make sure there's no smoking on patios." In fact, there were the vast majority that said, "Yes, I do." We talk about things up here as our priorities, and we want to be business-friendly. We want to be laser-focused on economic development. We want to support our local develop, our local business owners. And when the question was raised, if someone else came to us and said, "Hey, a policy was unfair. We didn't like this," would we look into it? Absolutely we would, and we damn well should. If a local business owner is saying a local-only policy is hurting their business and affecting their ability to do business in this town, then absolutely the city council should look into it and have a discussion of whether or not those laws make sense. In reality, if you take the bars that have closed and 0% those bars that have been unable to do business here, when you look at the data, they would be severe negatives in terms of 13 or 14, when you account for that population loss of, of students. When you take out some restaurants, again, that are restaurants with patios and not typical bars, that the mayor has made clear to me is a priority here, that the students have said it is a priority nightlife entertainment in bars for them to want to come to DeKalb and to come to Northern. Again, those aren't special interests. Those are our constituents. Those are our stakeholders. Those are the stakeholders in my warden, and Tony's warden, and Mike's warden specifically, that are coming to us saying, "We need this to survive against Sycamore right now. We need this to compete. It is costing us more to run our business. It is significantly more of a time and staffing burden. And if you want to avoid the smoke, there's opportunities to do that. You can go inside. You could go around the patio through the multiple exits." Again, we're not forcing staff to be in this, in the situation. We're not forcing- We're not forcing residents. If you'd like to do something that's legal and allowed and something we reap the tax benefits of, you're allowed to do that in public where it's legal. That doesn't seem like we're asking too much in terms of, let's not be big brother. Let's not force the businesses to do something that's against state law. Let's not force the people to do something they don't want to do. That's not our job here. Our job here is to work with our constituents and work with our business owners and make sure, whether it's anecdotal or whether it's in their heads or not, that we are making sure that we can compete in the business environment against those in very close proximity to us.
Dave, you were perhaps listening to me when I said I'm laser-focused on economic development. Believe me, I am. And I am so much aware of the fact that our business owners need to have business-friendly But this is an issue to me where public safety must trump the interest of a few folks who feel that they have to go to a restaurant that allows smoking to smoke. It just, it tears me because economic development is what we need to be all about in this city and what we will continue to focus on. But we also have to keep in mind the public safety of our residents must be paramount in our consideration. And this is where this particular ordinance to me seems to come down to. Alderman Fagan.
You know, I understand both sides. I really do. But I also, I'm not one to tell someone how to run their business, but I do believe that we should comply by the state law. Now, you know, we can get up here and talk for 45 minutes about this, but at the end of the day, at the end of the week, at the end of the month, at the end of the year, how much have we accomplished? And this is not taken away from any police department or anything like that. Where, how often are these, and I'll ask the chief, how often do you get phone calls on people? And has any arrests been happened on this?
I'll answer the last first. There have been very few citations issued. We do use the ordinance as a tool, you know, for like public order-type complaints.
Right.
But we try not to make it so much an enforcement by citation or arrest situation. We try to make it a compliance issue, so we go to ask people to please stop smoking and clean up their mess. Most have been fairly responsive. Some haven't, and some are tied to other events where other arrests are made as well.
Sure. And like I said, I don't want to take away from police, you know, but we can make all the laws we want, but you're still driving down the road and you see people holding the phone up to their ear or holding it like this, thinking that's not handheld and, or texting. And the police can't, can't make an arrest every time. I mean, they can try to do their best, but there's so much of it going on. And I guess that's what I'm getting at, that, I mean, we can pass the law as much as we want, it's still going to go on. And, but I believe it's going to be up to the landowner, to the business owner, on what they want to do. I don't think that many business owners are going to go over and comply with, I mean, they're going to still go smoke-free, at least the ones that I think will. And the ones that will probably go use the nine o'clock or if you decide on doing nine o'clock, will probably go, I mean, there'll be a couple of those. But it's not as if everybody's going to go out and start lighting up on the patio if we pass this ordinance.
Alderman Fanucan.
You know, I've said all along that this is a public health issue, much more than anything else. And that's truly what it comes down to, is a public health issue. Penn, I want to ask you, you said just now that, you know, you don't want to tell a business what they need to do, but you do commercial insurance.
Yes, I do.
Don't you go in and do inspections and tell businesses all the time, you need to correct this, you need to correct that, you need to correct that? This is pretty much the same thing, correcting an unsafe condition.
Well, yes and no. I mean, most of it is complying with, the city would say in the first place, and what they'd have to, the fire extinguishers and everything. And that to get into my business, and I prefer not to.
Well, I understand. But, but my point is, so you just cited city code, and that's what we're talking about is city code.
Right.
That that's what you, as an insurance agent, require people in their commercial businesses to do.
Right.
And so you do impact how they operate their business. And that's what I'm saying, that this is the same type of thing, that we're just asking them to comply with city code and no smoking, again, is a public health and safety issue.
And I know where you're going with that, Bill, but the thing is, they can say, well, all right, fine, Fagan, I'm not going to go with you. I'm going to go with somebody else that doesn't make me have to do all this work, too. So, I mean, they do have an option of going somewhere else where, but that, by the way, that was a good point.
Alderman in favor.
So I, I'll start out, I'm in favor of the, I actually like the amendment, potential amendment that could be, could be proposed. Couple of things that I saw today, I mean, one, I spoke with someone and they're like, if smoking's so bad, why don't we just make smoking illegal? When is that just going to happen? Because it's, it's bad for you, so why don't we just make it legal? I actually was watching a video today, and I saw that, we were talking about health and, believe it or not, I think it was during the '60s, doctors used to prescribe cigarettes to their patients, which I could not believe. It was unbelievable. But as it applies to this, I, I agree that it's the, it should be up to the business owner. I don't think we should go beyond the state. It's a legal activity, and our neighbor allow, our neighboring community allows it as well. I don't want to put our businesses at a disadvantage.
So then my motion to amend would state that we would follow our city ordinance until 9:00 PM. Do I need to state it any differently than that? Okay. So I'll make that motion.
So it's been moved that we amend our ordinance to allow smoking after nine o'clock.
Within the state statute.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
We have a confused city attorney.
I think that the first part, I was following you with. The second part, when you said within the state statute, that was the part that I was not following you with. I think, based on your discussion, it sounds like you don't want to make the proposed changes to the ordinance, except that the section referencing outdoor patios being prohibited would say something like, outdoor patios are prohibited between the hours of 2:00 AM and nine o'clock PM.
Or 9:00 PM and 2:00 AM. Right.
Yeah. So there'd be permitted hours, and it would reset every day.
But there's still a state statute to follow with regard to smoking on patios being near an entrance, et cetera, et cetera, correct?
And that would, that would still be covered by other portions of the city code that wouldn't be amended.
Got it. Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded on the amendment. Any further discussion? Alderman Markwart.
Well, let's amend that and say that they can't smoke within 15 feet of an outside bar service. Because you're 15 feet away from the servers there. So then they got to be at least 15 feet away from the bar service. Because otherwise, you're blowing smoke right at your bartenders all night.
Again, they have a choice as to whether or not they want to work in that environment. You don't force them to work there.
Yeah, you know, a lot of this reminds me, so the other night, because I go to bed really late, PBS is a wonderful TV station, and my mom, who's a retired teacher, would be proud. But there is a thing on the meatpacking industry in Chicago. And I'm sure they didn't want anybody telling them how to do their business before the regulations came into play. But there were regulations put into play for public safety and health and for the health of the employees in those facilities. Occasionally, there are times when you have to tell a business or put regulations in place that are for the greater good, not just for, I don't know how to say that part, but sometimes you have to have the regulations in place for the greater good of the general This is a case where, four years ago, DeKalb put that into place at a stronger stance than the state. We can debate statistics going back and forth all over the place. You can cite your sources, I can cite, if I wanted to spend the time to do it, cite my sources, but it's generally accepted practice, you know, statistics. But we can get this really filed up, and yes, we've spent 45 minutes on this, when we have some other things to talk about, which is the part that's driving me nuts.
Thank you. Alderman Jacobson.
Again, you're talking, in the context of the conversation, we're talking about people at bars using alcohol, which is also a dangerous substance. We're talking about a legal substance that we highly rely on the tax revenue, again, both alcohol and tobacco, in our community to pay our bills. If you want to go ahead and outlaw it, then stop pussyfooting around and do it, but then don't collect the sales taxes from it. Don't add taxes on bars saying you have to charge more money than we can take to pay our operations when we're allowing you less in revenue options and less in customer base because we don't want to get involved in your business until we want to get involved in your pocket. That's the silliness here. You can't justify both sides of the argument. Either you allow the businesses to operate and give them the same realities and fairness as their competitors do, or you don't. And I'm okay with either. But to say, we're going to put regulations on it that makes sense for us, we become the special interest, not them. And again, if you care that much and feel that strongly about the public safety of dangerous substances, let's outlaw drinking in DeKalb. Let's outlaw the liquor stores and bars. And see what it does to the university, and see what it does to our sales tax base, and see what it does to our community because you suddenly care so much about this perceived public health initiative when it benefits you.
Alderman Markwart.
So alcohol is legal, smoking is legal. Alcohol becomes illegal when the misuse of it creates a detriment to other people, such as intoxicated driving or other actions that come about. Therefore, the use of tobacco and the blowing of smoke is illegal in this instance when it comes to the detriment of other people, be it allergic reactions to smoke, be it somebody who's asthmatic, who wants to happen to be out and enjoy some time, be it whatever. So in those cases, the strict limit here, when the use gets turned into an illegal use, that's what I'm against.
So if I had a peanut allergy, we should regulate Texas Roadhouse that gives peanuts because it hurts my, what I don't like? They should change their business model?
They're in Sycamore, we can't touch them.
I'm just saying. Should restaurants not have any peanut-based products because I have an allergy and I can choose whether or not I go there? Should we regulate peanut products in DeKalb because they create a health hazard to some section of the community that doesn't happen to like them, and we need to protect their public health rights? No, that's outrageous and silliness.
Alderman Fanucan.
Dave, you've been in a classroom lately in school where almost every classroom has a peanut allergy sign up on the wall.
That's silliness.
Anyway, so, you know, again, it's the public health issue. And Mike, if I may quote Mr. Spock to help you understand one point you tried to make, sometimes the good of the many outweighs the good of the few. And I think that this is a good place to indicate that. So I'd like to call question, and let's move forward.
Okay. So what we're voting on is the ordinance as amended, or do we vote on the amendment first?
Yes.
Okay. We are all pretty clear as to what the amendment is calling for. In effect, we'll allow smoking after nine o'clock on patios in DeKalb. Roll call.
If I can just clarify, so we're clear on the record here. So a yes vote right now would be in favor of the amendment, which would change the proposed ordinance to allow smoking after 9:00 PM.
That's right.
It would allow businesses to decide whether or not they allow smoking.
Correct. It would remove the city regulation after 9:00 PM. And no vote would be against that amendment, which would retain the original ordinance that's brought forward.
Then we'd still have to vote on that.
Roll call.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
No.
Verbig?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanucan?
No.
Markwart?
No.
Smith?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. So basically, no change in the city in DeKalb.
No. We have to, we have to vote on the original motion. That was the amendment.
That was the amendment. Okay. Now we move, now we move forward on the, the amendment failed. We have a motion on the floor and a second, I believe. Can we use the original?
Yes.
Motion and second, that we want to amend Chapter 64 of this ordinance.
So a yes vote would mean that smoking would be permitted on outdoor patios, and no vote would mean there'd be no change in our code which would prohibit smoking on patios.
Right. Roll call.
Noriko?
No.
Verbig?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanucan?
No.
Markwart?
No.
Fagan?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, moving back to propose an amendment that we keep the law on the books as it sits.
I beg your pardon? I'd like to propose an amendment that we make no changes to the law as it sits, because you're going to get a 4-4 split on that, too, which would mean that law is then invalidated. That's why the mayor shouldn't be voting on things when it's a 4-4 split.
Yep.
So then I will propose the amendment that we keep smoking on patio, that we keep disallowing smoking on patios.
If that motion fails, it doesn't have an impact.
How so? If we are, if I am now proposing an amendment that we allow smoking on, or we disallow smoking on patios, and the council decides that that motion fails, then it would invalidate our law.
So the two reasons that wouldn't work, one, what you're proposing is a reconsideration of the previous motion, and you were not in the prevailing side of that vote. And two, Robert's rules doesn't permit you to state a motion as a double negative that has that kind of logical fallacy in it. If the motion failed, there's no...
Then the law would be invalidated.
No.
I'm not providing a double negative.
Right.
I'm providing an affirmative action that the city council takes to outlaw smoking on patios and to continue the law as it sits.
But it's not a properly, it's not a properly made motion if your contention is that the result of it failing would be a change in the law. That is a fundamental violation of Robert's rules. Separate from that, it's a motion to reconsider the action that was previously taken, and there wasn't a prevailing party. Well, I guess the no's would be the prevailing party.
Correct, which would mean I'm in the prevailing party.
I corrected myself. I'm sorry. The no's would be the prevailing party because the motion didn't pass.
Correct.
Could, let me interject something here.
I understand.
I understand the mayor can't speak. I know you don't want him to vote on this particular thing, but if Dave or any of our councilmen feel they want to bring this back for reconsideration at any time, only two need to. Is that correct?
So separate from...
Separate from this particular vote?
If it's not a motion for reconsideration, if it's something the council took up, knew at some other point in time, it would require two Alderman requests to have it headed back to the amendment.
But point of information, though, would that not require it to be from the prevailing side, and since the no's prevailed, it would have to be one of us, or two of us rather that voted no?
The no's are not...
So we don't have anything in our city code, nor is there anything to Robert's rules that would address at what point in time, after what temporal period, you can reconsider. You can take new action on the same motion. So for example, this ordinance was passed in 2014 or 2015, and the city council now, several years later, is, is coming to, well, in this case, you're affirming that conclusion. You could have come to a different conclusion. I would say certainly within... I would say certainly within the same meeting, likely at the meeting thereafter, where we're still within the ordinary window for a motion to reconsider, it would only be appropriately brought by someone on the prevailing side of the motion. Thereafter, there's nothing in our code or in Robert's rules that says this is the defined period of time that you have to wait before a given topic could be reevaluated by a public body.
Based on past practice, when we've had a tie vote and a new amendment has been brought to the floor, formerly met several times by Mayor Ray, it is the practice of the city, the standard operating practice, to allow motions to come onto the floor in a tie vote to try to break the tie. And we have done that in several occasions since I've been on this council, which has been allowed. Based on standard operating procedure and the common rules that we have followed here, it would be acceptable then for me to interject a tie-breaking motion then to be discussed by the council. And if then you, it was done in a positive fashion, again, it was not a double negative, and was voted down, that would create a conundrum for the council, being that there was another tie, which is why the mayor is not allowed to vote in these situations and why our city practice is broken and damaged because he should be using his mayoral veto in these situations, which would require a supermajority to then consider the issue and override the mayor. But because we have a broken city ordinance, and because this city council has not fixed that ordinance, it puts the mayor in a very awkward position as the eighth vote, which creates situations like this. So regardless of the vote now, it is yet another indicator, since I've sat here, that this mayor claimed he would not vote against the will of the majority of the council. It has been proven again tonight that he will on those issues, he for whatever reason feels is important enough to do so, and it is incumbent upon us as a council to then change the ordinance locally to fix that loophole where the mayor can create an artificial majority. Again, they are the prevailing side of this argument, even though they did not have a majority. He has created an unofficial majority and improperly exercised his power as mayor, much like the last mayor did, much like the mayor before him did. So let's have that, to stay and get that fixed ASAP. And I'm calling for another council member to state tonight that that should be on the next agenda to deal with the fact the mayor should not be voting in tie-causing situations.
Do you have a second?
Thank you.
David, I'm looking at you back on that screen. You're somewhat in delay, but really, you look pretty good for that. And I respect your assessment of my feeling that in most cases, I'm going to take a look at the majority of this council and will try to align myself. In this case, I simply could not. I feel very, very strongly that this is a public health issue. So, let me make one other comment before we move on. If you recall, I have called for a special committee of the whole on meeting and meeting logistics. I would think that this may be the perfect place, perhaps, to talk about that very thing. Since I was elected, I have heard people say, "Now, are you voting, or can you vote? Does the mayor vote?" Yes, the mayor votes. And in this case, as you indicate, the mayor creates a situation where a tie negates a decision. So I'm certainly willing to have that discussion. Did I hear two of you already talk about that? So are you comfortable with first discussing that in a cow?
I'd like it to be on the next cow agenda, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
For action that evening. It's something that we've allowed to alter for months and months and months.
Or at least consensus that we then move forward. We can't vote at the cow, I don't believe.
No, you can have it at the council meeting afterward.
But we can move that to a city council consideration. Great. Thank you. The smoke is cleared.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move along to number three, something which may not...
I'm sorry, I hate to belabor the point.
Oh, no.
With regard to the contention that the city has processed votes differently in previous ties, I don't believe there's been a situation or a motion made in analogous fashion to Alderman Jacobson's motion. And I would respectfully suggest...
I have them in my notes.
I would respectfully suggest that the challenge with the mayor voting or the application of that state statute relates in large measure to the unusual circumstance of the city having an even number of people in the city council instead of an odd number of people in the city council, which is what gives rise to this unique local circumstance. We follow the state statute, which the city for many years did not do, and very clearly did not do. With respect to the discussion that just occurred though, I think there's a lack of clarity between what the expectations of council and the mayor are as far as if we return at the next meeting just at the committee of the whole, or if we're being asked to return at the next meeting at the committee of the whole and also at the council meeting.
Committee of the whole only. We can always move that to the following meeting.
I can handle that.
Are you comfortable with that, David?
I can handle that.
Huh?
I can handle that.
Yeah, okay. Mike, you can handle that. Can you handle that, Dean?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Item number three, Resolution two thousand and eighteen zero-two-seven, authorizing the creation of a paint-a-plug program.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Jason Nitschnick, our economic development planner, will talk about paint-a-plug.
Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully, this is a little bit more lighthearted and less contentious than the last time. For your consideration this evening, the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission is recommending the creation of a fire hydrant painting program, which has been appropriately named Paint-a-Plug. This is something that the enhancement commission has talked about for quite a long time, before my tenure with the city. And now we've just gotten to a point where we've been able to create the program and application all the appropriate backup and bring it forward to council. So the program is modeled off of several communities throughout the country that allow citizens, I guess residents and non-residents, depending on the community, to participate in creating public art by coming together either as a group of neighbors or a citizens group, students at a school, and painting fire hydrants. The city has about twenty-four hundred fire hydrants in its jurisdiction, which gives us quite a bit of canvas for people that want to participate to paint. So in the backup for you this evening is the, a draft application and program overview. So how the program would work is, if it is approved this evening, we will work with IT to get this put up on the city's website and also create a designated email address for people to send their applications into. So they would download a PDF which includes a picture of some blank fire hydrants where they would put in, they would draw what their proposed artwork is, and then submit that for consideration. Applications would be collected on a monthly basis and then taken to the enhancement commission for consideration. The enhancement commission would review those, and then also give the fire department a chance to review those and make sure that the designs are not going to have any issue on public safety. And then if they are approved, those applicants would be notified via email or mail, depending on what their preference is. And they would be allowed to paint their hydrants between April first and November first on an annual basis. After painting the hydrant, they'd be requested to take a picture of their art, email it back to that designated email, and then also share it on social media using hashtag #ProwlDeKalb. And then throughout the year and after that, they would be asked to check in on their art, and if it needs to be touched up to do so. In circumstances where the correct paint is not used, or the art begins to deteriorate, the city would have the right to go back and include that as their regular maintenance and paint them back to the traditional red color. There's some rules and regulations included in here highlighting some, you know, inappropriate things that shouldn't be painted on the hydrants. Also, objects are not allowed to be attached or glued to the fire hydrants as that would have an impact on the fire department's ability to use those in public works to maintain. Recommend using an oil-based primer and oil-based, high-quality oil-based enamel paint that's specifically for metal. When applicants that are approved are notified, we're also going to give them a little bit more detail on where they can, some brands of paint that they can get, and where they can get that in the community. So there's also a waiver for indemnity purposes, and they would be requested to fill that, that'd be a requirement as well. So if you have any questions, I would entertain those at this time.
It sounds like a program that the enhancement commission has worked hard on. I commend the enhancement commission. Any comments on a paint-a-plug program, Alderman Fanouken?
No, overall, I think it's a great idea. I do see a couple of issues that may come up to it. Somebody wants to do, something would be a copyright infringement or the painting of an identifiable individual, something like that, that I think we'd at least need to have a little bit of a discussion where that would go. I think particularly with the copyright issue, you know, because there are some companies that are very protective of their copyrights. Like if somebody wanted to do, say, a Mickey Mouse fire hydrant, Disney's very protective of theirs.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson? Fanouken?
Yes.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Item number four, thank you, Jason. Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash zero-two-eight, authorizing an engineering services agreement with Fair Graham and Associates, LLC, for design and construction engineering services in an estimated amount of one hundred and eighty thousand, one oh five, not to exceed one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So moved. Motion. So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Tim Holdeman, our public works director, will address this issue.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. You'll recall that two weeks ago during our committee of the whole meeting, we discussed the two thousand and eighteen street maintenance program. Having done so, we now request city council approve an engineering agreement for the preliminary engineering and construction engineering for undertaking that two thousand and eighteen street maintenance program. You'll recall that our two thousand and eighteen program included overlay, grinding and overlay of Ridge Drive, Elwood Neighborhood, East Taylor Street, and some other miscellaneous repairs. And that construction cost were estimated at one point eight two million dollars, plus a ten percent engineering fee. And so we used ten percent of that one point eight two to estimate one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars for the engineering services. We will fund this project from MFT, TIF one, TIF two, and Fund Fifty, our local gas tax fund. That's the setting for this. We did select an engineer using our qualifications-based selection process, or QBS, late in two thousand and sixteen. And from that process, we interviewed four different firms. And the firm that won that, we engaged them in a contract for last year. And we put in that contract that if we were satisfied with their services, that we could extend that contract for another year. Whereas they did do a good job engineering, I felt like they fell short of the level of communication and responsiveness that we really needed, particularly going forward into a substantially larger program that we're looking at for two thousand and eighteen. So because of that, I do not want to hire that firm for the second year. And would like to get permission from council to engage the firm that was second in of those four that we interviewed. The first firm scored ninety-four, the second firm scored ninety. I know that the firm that was in second place, Fair Graham and Associates, has worked for the city and done outstanding job, both in engineering and construction services. So I'm very satisfied with that level of service they provided in the past and think that this is a good move moving forward. It will allow us to move forward in an expeditious manner to get our project going. If we don't do this, we'll have to go back to step one and begin the QBS process all over again. Or if directed by council, we would hire Willett Hoffman, the previous engineer, to do the second year. I'm strongly recommending that we not do that and that we move forward with Fair Graham for two thousand and eighteen street maintenance program.
Tim, what is the difference in what it would cost us if we retain Hoffman, or Willett Hoffman? Compared to Fair Graham?
I did not seek a proposal, but ten percent...
Oh, I see, okay.
I did not seek a proposal from them, but ten percent is a minimum standard for construction for this type of services. Generally, it would be ten to fifteen percent. So we are on the low end of that general range. I don't think that Willett Hoffman would represent a significant savings. And even if they did, I wouldn't be comfortable going forward, given their performance last year.
Okay. Alderman Favor?
So I just have, because you mentioned it, I have to ask, what, do you know what the difference in the point score between a ninety-four and a ninety? What are the, what are the four points particularly that Fair Graham scored lower in?
Yes, I do. Fair Graham was one point lower on experience and qualifications. Out of thirty, they had twenty-seven as compared to twenty-eight. They were tied for experience and qualifications in the firm. Unique thinking and a unique approach. Fair Graham was two points less, eighteen compared to twenty. But that's where, that's three points. And then one point over, in the category of overall completeness and presentation, one point. So in three different categories, one or two points made up that four-point differential of ninety versus ninety-four.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or questions of Tim? Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
No.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, let's move right along. Item number five, Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash zero-two-nine, authorizing a professional services agreement with TR One Productions, Byron Wilkins. Move, a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Our IT director, Mark Thorson, will speak to this item.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, I'm presenting a request to waive bids and improve an agreement with TR One Studios, which includes permission for payment in excess of twenty thousand dollars. And as the mayor stated, for clarification purposes, Mr. Byron Wilkins is the proprietor of TR One Studios. Mr. Wilkins has over thirty years of experience, just a little background on him, in public broadcast television and in corporate video production, and has extensive experience in desktop publishing and is an accomplished artist, which is, has been a benefit to the city, so. Many of you know him that he is involved with the videography for the meetings. It's actually just a component of what the city has been asking him to do over the years. He started with the city in two thousand and six, working with the technician at the time, Jeff Bertell. After his retirement, the work was kind of split up amongst the remaining staff. And we've been asking Byron to help us out further as we move forward. Some of the things that we are working on with Byron, in addition to the videography, is also working directly with the custom software that's required to be able to broadcast and schedule and work through Channel fourteen, as well as the YouTube subscription channel. He also does desktop publishing for the city with regards to a number of topics. The website is one. Also with Channel fourteen, being able to build templates for that. So we're asking him to do that as well, as part of this. And important, an important note is, I'm asking Byron to take a lead in a Channel fourteen sustainability initiative. We want to make sure that Channel fourteen... We want to make sure that Channel 14 is sustainable, and figure out new ways that we can be able to leverage the channel. And if there's other avenues that we can pursue, we're working with other communities that have done different things, and we're trying to get ideas from them and figure out what makes sense in the city that we can present. We have, the agreement covers 600 hours for the year, and the rate, the rate that we're being charged is about $40 an hour, which is a significant discount from his normal $75 an hour. And just to, just because I wanted to do my due diligence, I reached out to some other communities and found that the going rate is closer to his normal rate. So we are getting a benefit from using Mr. Wilkins. And with that, I'm willing to answer any questions you might
You and I have talked about this a little bit, Mark, but for the benefit of our City Council, I really feel that we can do a better job of utilizing Channel 14 in terms of communicating to our public. You know, we have Comcast. I know that Comcast is doing a, what I would call, a better job of utilizing public access for its channel, the Channel 14s of the world. I understand they're not all on 14. But, so I would be interested if, in fact, we approve this resolution tonight to have Byron reach out to City Councilmen and others to get some ideas regarding how we can uptick, if you will, our utilization of Channel 14. Alderman-Fanukin?
I just have one question. I understand, you know, Byron's done a great job for us. Don't misunderstand my question, but what if he comes down with the flu like I did two weeks ago and is unavailable? Who's, what's, what's our backup plan?
Right now, it's staff as a backup plan. However, we are working on a subsequent plan to be able to assist with that, because that is a real concern, obviously.
So let's say, two weeks from now, he's sick, you'll be back in the room?
Not necessarily me, but we have another exempt staff that would be able to help us out.
All right. Thank you.
Alderman-Jacobson?
Two comments on it. One, I really, again, don't think we should have open-ended contracts with contractors. I think it sets a bad precedent for us, and it should be renewed by each council each year to make sure it makes sense, and it's within the budget, and it's something we can afford. So I would suggest that in the term, we create one-year terms in the, in the agreement to be renewed annually. Again, while I agree that Byron's done a very competent job for us thus far, I'd like to see, being that it's over $20,000, it goes out to competitive bid, I think there are other parties locally that can certainly handle the responsibilities and duties, and I'd like to see if indeed we are getting a value. And C, I think this is the perfect opportunity, yet again, to bring up the wonderful resource we have a couple blocks from here, NIU, in terms that they have an entire department and major dedicated to this realm and arena, in terms of video production and news production, that we are not utilizing to our advantage. This is something generally, especially the production and the videography of the event, that NIU could be doing for free or next to free for us, and use it as an internship opportunity. While I realize there's other parts of this contract that probably fall outside that realm, and you wouldn't leave some of those directives to a college student without the understanding and ability to do these things long-term. Again, I think it's something we should look at more whole-scale. Where can NIU come in, and where can we give educational and internship opportunities to our students locally to help reinforce what they're doing and help give us a saving? So my amendment at this point would be only to change the term of the agreement to a one-year agreement to be updated annually.
I have a comment and then a question of you, Dave. My comment is, is that as IT Thorson is very well and much aware, because he accompanied me to Northern, we have visited Northern. I have asked Northern's television, a television studio over there to get involved. At this point, they appear to be, I guess, preoccupied with other things, and they have not been too proactive in engaging us. But I feel very strongly that, yes, they do have a studio, and so that, that effort and that outreach, Dave, has been made, okay? Secondly, my question to you is, would you be comfortable with amending this to be a one-year term with TR-1, at which time, and at the completion of that year, or as we get closer to the end of that year, we would advertise for bids? Would you be comfortable with that? And my question to Mark, would TR-1 be comfortable with, with that proposal, do you suspect, or that stipulation?
I would prefer to ask before I answer for him, so I, I
I would.
For the benefit of the public, you popped out and said I would.
I was gonna ask Mr. Wilkins to pop his head out in there, and he did. Byron, okay, great. So that, that question has been answered, and yes, yeah, and I think it's, it's probably a good point.
I'll second it, though.
Okay, so that, that is amended, to make this a one-year contract, and seconded by Alderman-Fagan. Any further discussion on that? Yes, Alderman-Verbeck?
And having spent the last 11 years of my career as a broadcast engineer, this is a tremendous value.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other comment? So we're voting on the amendment initially, okay? Do you understand the amendment, Sue? Okay, roll call.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Now, we vote on the original resolution?
As amended.
As amended, right. Chair?
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman-Verbeck?
Mark, do we have a second public access channel provided by Comcast? Do you know?
Not that I'm aware of. The only one I'm aware of is Channel 14, as government access.
Okay. At one time, we had some meetings and talked about that there could have been a second channel, so. Just untapped potential, I think of whether it's NIU programming, local programming, different community groups, very supportive, so.
It's in a very raw state, but just for clarification, that is definitely on the table.
Great. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call on the original resolution.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended, right.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
So moved. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Byron. Okay, let's move on to Roman numeral eight, or item H, New and Unfinished Business, Vacant Building Registration Discussion. Joe Ellen?
Mayor?
Are you, are you gonna speak to, yes?
There's an item before that, the City Council Goals.
I just wanted to, City Goals. Is your thing messed up again?
Yeah, my thing is messed up again. Okay.
I think you should give us each a different agenda for every meeting, and it would be awesome.
I think that's a terrible idea.
New and Unfinished Business, 2018 City Council Goals, and I'm gonna ask our City Manager, Anne Marie Gora, to address that.
Thank you very much, Mayor. First of all, I'm just gonna kind of give a brief background for the public. I know the council's aware of this whole chronology. In advance of the January 24th goal-setting session, the council was asked to consider the following. What main goals or projects would you like to see addressed within the next one or two years, both short-term and long-term? So as a result of the discussion that took place at the goal-setting session on January 24th at the library, the council originally came up with some broad parameters. As you are aware, that session was facilitated by Carol Zare, who's a retired executive director of the Illinois County, City County Management Association. As a result of that, the council had focused on short-term and long-term priorities, and part of your responsibilities that night were to take those information and put those into categories. As a result of that, you came out of that meeting, I believe, with 10 different categories. Subsequent to that, on Tuesday, February 20th, you had a follow-up meeting to determine what were the prioritization of those particular goals. In preparation for the February 20th Special Committee of the Hold Meeting, the mayor identified both the top vote-getting council goals and other important goals. That ended up being 39 goals. All this information is included in the agenda packet. They're highlighted in yellow in what was entitled "The City Council Goal Setting Session Summary." At the Special Committee of the Hold Meeting, the council then reviewed and prioritized those 39 goals. Ultimately, the council identified a total of 10 goals. Five were short-term, five were long-term. The short-term goals are as follows, and I'm gonna give the category first and the specific goal second. Under Economic Business Development, create a business-friendly municipal code and UDO. Under Airport, Airport Strategy Meeting, under Budget, Finance, Fiscal Planning, reduce operating costs to those within our means. Under Community, Special Events and Attractions, review city regulations and adapt to encourage more special events and festivals. Under Northern Illinois University, work with NIU to resolve AGN and Greek Row issues. There were also five long-term goals. They are as follows, with the category first and the goal second. Under Residential Growth, think outside the box in terms of growth and rooftops. Under Government Operations, evaluate city structure and organization. Under Budget, Finance, Fiscal Planning, address pension obligations. Under Capital Planning, address and implement long-term street funding. And under Public Safety, reduce crime, be viewed as safe. As the next step, I will start, actually, I've already started working with the executive team to take these goals and identify proposed strategies and actions for consideration. If you take a look, or for the public, anybody can take a look at what's currently in the 2025 DeKalb Strategic Plan, you'll see the goal, and then you'll see strategies, and you'll see action. So what we're doing as staff right now is an outgrowth of your meeting last week, is we're going back through the strategic plan to see if any of the goals that you've already identified are listed in the strategic plan, and then what strategies and actions there are. We will then be bringing this information back to you as part of the separate budget workshops that you are holding every month. So the next one is gonna be March 20th. We will either bring these back in their entirety, or we're gonna tie them in to the separate budget discussions. Part of it depends on the complexity and the length of discussion on some of these budgets. But we are going to wrap all these discussions on the goals to get very clear delineation as far as what your proposed actions are to fulfill those goals. So that's the kickoff for the public in regards to the fiscal year 19 budget process. These are short-term goals and long-term goals. So some of these goals would be accomplished within a 12 to 18-month timeframe, those are the short-term. And the long-term goals are looking at more of a three-and-a-half-year timeframe. So we will continue to bring back further information to you, and at this point in time, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but these are all your ideas, so really, it's a matter of discussion amongst yourselves.
Any comments? Alderman-Verbeck?
First to commend council on really getting together on some consensus, I guess, building consensus right away. I think the key for these goals will be to agree on measures. How will we be able to determine whether or not, you know, some of these statements are pretty broad. There's, there's a lot that could be placed there. So I think part of our responsibility will be to set these measures, and, you know, we talked about SMART goals in the past, so we have a timeframe in mind. But again, I think, key thing is, I hope we start thinking about measures that we're comfortable with.
Yeah, I agree, and I think also that we need to reiterate our goal, if you will, to incorporate these into our discussions with Finance Advisory Committee. It's important that we let them know what it is that we're talking about. They can give us some guidance and some discussion on our ability to pay for some of these ideas and some of these goals. Alderman-Verbeck?
Yeah, really, all committees and commissions would, would really enjoy to hear their ideas, thoughts with regard to these initial goals by this council.
I think you're right.
And Mayor, if I can add, based on your comment and direction last week in a meeting that you and I had, this item is on tomorrow's Finance Advisory Committee agenda, so you will see that listed. So as they go through the fiscal year 19 budget process, they have these goals on their agenda tomorrow.
Good. Thank you. Okay, anything else, Anne Marie?
No, sir.
Okay, let's move along to Vacant Building Registration Discussion, Community Development Director, Joe Ellen-Charm.
Hi, Mayor and council. I have the distinct privilege tonight to introduce you and the community to Thaddeus Mack. Thaddeus is our new Chief Building Official that joined the city on November 7th. He's been getting his feet wet, working with the groups to take over some of the plan review, inspections, and co-compliance, and I'd like to introduce him tonight. He comes to the city with municipal experience, most recently from Rockford, and having spent about five to six years there in that capacity. And prior to that, he worked in several private industries in an architectural field. So it's a very unique and well, well-put-together group of criteria for him to come to the city and provide us with great service. He's gonna go over the next agenda item for you, as it's something that he would be overseeing. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and elected officials. Alderman, as Joe Ellen and say, they come, obviously have some experience with a different community than the City of DeKalb, coming from the City of Rockford, and some of the difficulties that they faced with vacant buildings and vacant properties becoming a blight and ongoing issue, detracting from communities, neighborhood health overall. As was requested of me, I put together some basic information to try to give three paths that offer discussion tonight, just to get some basic understanding of where the will of the council is, to see this go forward. I don't expect action to be taken tonight on this item, however, just want to provide you some background and information for consideration. But then, at that point, would like your direction to go down one of these three paths. If you tell me you like the way two of them sound, I'm happy to do that as well. So I'm here to facilitate and do the best that I can, certainly happy to answer any questions so far that I've come up with. On a broad overview of this, the City of DeKalb presently has about 240 foreclosed properties. That does not include any other vacant properties that have become vacant through owners walking away or abandoning the property. At this point, those 240 foreclosed properties can potentially be a nuisance and a problem, in that sitting vacant and foreclosed, it's often difficult for staff to track down who owns the property. I've had a number of instances, not with the City of DeKalb, but in my past experience, where I've been in court and had someone fly in from Colorado, and they've not been on the property for six years, but technically, they still own it because the bank has not perfected foreclosure. That being said, of this, of the three paths that I spoke about earlier, one is to continue on, take no action at this time if we don't believe that this to be a big enough issue to warrant immediate addressing. Another path would be to have city staff try to take this on. I can tell you with certainty that we do not have the staff or capacity to do that, as currently, the current situation that we have, without having to hire additional staff. And I know that's not something that the council, I believe, coming out of our last budget discussion, wanted to do. I have done some research, talked to the City of Aurora. Aurora presently has about 500 vacant properties, and I believe 200 or 300, I'm sorry, 500 foreclosed properties, and then another 300 vacant properties. Of their foreclosed properties, they have now two full-time managers that deal with that, as well as four additional clerks. So if I just try to split the, split the number right down the middle, going from 500 to 240, we're looking at approximately three full-time individuals, in addition to what we currently have for staff. Third option would be, we can explore third-party companies or partners that we can seek out for how they would best leverage their, their assets, their data, and what it would cost for the City of DeKalb to partner with them in order to have them administer a full-time vacant and foreclosed property program. One of those companies that I've done research on actually has it presented as a revenue stream where it would bring in money for the city, based on that registration fee as collected when they take, or when the registration is completed by the bank during the foreclosure process. So just a high-level overview of those three veins. Happy to answer any questions. If there's more specifics, I did try to get as, as much in detail as possible at this level, without going too far down one path to push this conversation one way or the other. or the other.
Alderman Verbi?
Well, I brought this forward full well knowing it would require resources. So it'll be up to this council to decide what are those priorities amongst our operations. You know, do we shift dollars from another area to cover this? Is it really a priority for council to address this? Certainly, I look at this as an opportunity to create a measure toward one of our goals, and that's economic development. So again, there's a cost of doing so, but I think it would be very valuable to the city to acquire and retain that information.
Alderman Jacobson?
Let me first ask a couple of questions, just to make sure I have things clear. Obviously, we do several abatements in the city of DeKalb. We have an abatement budget, both for law and other abatements we need out there. How many properties approximately are we abating at this point, foreclosed properties? A few dozen?
I don't have the specific numbers on that in front of me, although I believe our abatement budget for this year has been pretty substantially curtailed compared to previous years.
Again, when those abatements are occurring, we attempt to recoup our costs through liens on those, correct?
The city does lien where mowing occurs, yes.
And when a house is foreclosed, do we ever see those liens, or are those wiped out through the foreclosure?
It depends on the nature of the foreclosure and the timing of the lien. In some instances, we do recover on them. In some instances, they are wiped out through the foreclosure process.
Again, knowing some of these gray title properties, which is a property where the owner has effectively walked away at that point, they're not going to pay you. They don't care. They've moved out of the property. Much like we saw with Protonos, they felt they were no longer responsible for that site, whether the deed said their name on it still or not. In the large-scale cases, large buildings, as we saw with Warlitzer specifically, and some of the others, the banks are often loath to foreclose those properties. Otto's was a similar situation in that case. Again, I guess my question would be to us is what is the goal here? Is the goal to get them cleaned up? Then let's talk a higher abatement budget. Is the goal to get them torn down? That's, again, a more aggressive city staffing issue that we clearly don't have the staff for. So being that it's a couple dozen that I know that were really abating residentially, and they're the same homes typically for a while, until the bank does something about them, the reality of tracking these banks down and getting them to comply, again, they're out-of-town banks that either haven't yet foreclosed or haven't gotten through the process, I certainly don't want to hire two or three more management staff to send notices to banks that are never going to pay us when we can abate them and lien them at this point. So again, we know most of the vacant property around. The question would become, when does it become vacant? If an elderly mother or father dies and vacates the house, is it vacant then? Do the kids have to then come and pay a $200 fee to the city even though they're maintaining the property? When does that trigger? Does a landlord have to come in when his tenant vacates and list it as a vacant property until he can find another tenant? I just think we're opening a very large can of worms without a defined problem. And Mike and I have talked about this quite a few times. Again, it's 30 or 40 homes we're dealing with, that again, absolutely blight the neighborhood. It's not fun for the neighbors that live next to a house that's gone gray title or been abandoned. But really, other than maintain it ourselves and hope to recover some of that money back in liens, which is already a time-intensive process for our staff, what else really can we do about it, I guess?
Alderman Verbi?
Mr. Mack?
Just to clarify a couple of points. One thing that I did include in my memo is that the city of Aurora also has, it's a vacant property program as well as a foreclosed property program. Two separate programs. Round Lake Beach and several other municipalities combine that all into one. So another option to present as well to council, if we know there's vacant properties, and we want to better define that and handle that in another time, we could potentially also move forward with just a vacant, or I'm sorry, a foreclosed property registration program, see that as a trial. We're going to be going after, you know, potentially the banks on this, to have them pay registration fee if there's success there. And we can get that kind of wave effect to help clean up some of our vacant properties. We could do that as well.
I noticed in the options that you gave us, we can do nothing. We can hire more staff, which I don't think we're going to do.
I don't think so either.
And thirdly, is hire a third party.
Correct.
But you threw a caveat in there in saying that what we would try to do is ensure the city to get the best service with the lowest out-of-pocket costs or the highest revenues.
Correct.
The last one seems to be...
I like that option.
Correct. I like that one also. We make some money on this, okay? Or at least we cover costs.
Correct.
How familiar are you with this third-party program in other communities?
So they predominantly are, they're a Florida-based company, and so they have a lot of the municipalities are in Florida. I believe they have seven in the state of Illinois. I can bring back a list or foreground information, but across the US, I want to say they have 250 communities that they have this set up with. Village of Round Lake Beach, the one that I contacted, if you don't mind, I'll just share a little quick information on the math of how it works out with them. So their program registration, that this third-party company charges is minimum of $100. Round Lake Beach tax onto that an additional $30. So the total to a bank is $130. Round Lake Beach, for every property that gets registered, gets $30 annually. I don't know the total number of properties that they have, but other municipalities do it, like Aurora, for example, does $200 every six months. So if they were to hire this company, that's six staff they wouldn't have to maintain, as well as getting $200 per property if they're at every six-month registration. That doesn't get into additional factors, such as if you have problem properties. So a bank forecloses on a property, but they're not willing to maintain it, mow it, upkeep it, we cite a violation on that. Potentially, we could then increase what the fees are for that. So whereas this year might be $200, but you didn't mow your property like the city ordinance mandates, next year it's going to be $400, next year it'll be $800, whatever the case may be. So some of that is math details that I would certainly want to come back and get the will of the council on before moving forward with a formal presentation. But that's how they cover it, as a no-cost, but also a revenue-generating measure for communities.
If I could add one thing to that, mayor. To Alderman Jacobson's point, if it's a property that has tall grass that we're going to mow it, it's relatively, if we have funding for that, it's relatively easy to abate it, figure out who the owner of record is and file a lien. If it's a property that has other code enforcement issues or property maintenance issues, and we're trying to get someone to fix broken windows, or address peeling paint, or holes in the roof, or other issues like that, it can be very staff-resource intensive to try and track down current ownership, and try and track down contact information for current owners, which the, working with a contractor that their business is having the contact information for every mortgage servicer, large and small, and their maintenance companies, and having the ability to get us in touch more directly with those parties would potentially allow us to leverage our code enforcement staff a little bit more effectively, because we wouldn't have to do that tracking down part of the process when we're dealing with property maintenance. We would just be able to go to the registry, figure out exactly who it was, or send to the company to do the legwork on tracking down, we identified another vacant property, can you track down who the owners of this are, and expedite our side of it.
Dean, are these vacant buildings that we have, you said there's 240?
Yes.
240.
240.
Thad, thank you. Is there any significant number that are leading to either public health problems? And/or, and I'd ask Gene to respond to this also, are there any vacant buildings that are leading to potential crime problems?
From the public health perspective, I guess from what we see, it depends on how advanced they are. We have a residential house, I can think of, that has been vacant since the floods of 2006, that from the outside doesn't appear to have any issues with it. We have some properties that become vacant that, when the tenants vacate them, they cause significant damage to the properties, and break doors and windows, and make those inviting hospitable places for individuals that likely shouldn't be in the property. So it varies greatly all across the scope. We have some vacant buildings that are collapsing, and some that are in very good shape.
Gene?
I would just say, this is pretty much anecdotal. For instance, we had a home, and I believe it was on John Street, that was vacant, boarded up, and squatters had come in and taken over the residence. And, you know, we're using the basement as a toilet. The facilities were, the building itself was structurally not sound favorable to be inhabited safely. The big example, I could say, where I think there was an implication of crime involved was 912 Edgbrook. I think there was a host of issues with that building. You know, we had a high demand for service at that building. There was drug dealing in that building, a variety of crimes, including robberies, associated with that building. So it kind of runs the gamut. But to say there's an epidemic of buildings causing or factoring in a big way to crime, I really couldn't do that. Couldn't say that.
Thank you. Alderman Jacobson?
Again, in terms of Edgbrook, it wasn't a foreclosure. It was something we caused, and we knew it was supposedly or supposed to be vacant. So I appreciate that there have been a couple high-profile ones, but in reality, I guess my question is, where is the big problem, and how is the easiest way to affect it, to tell these banks? What if the bank just doesn't pay? What if they choose not to pay? The banks don't want these houses. They're getting them dumped back on them by people not paying their bills. And they often take much, much less than they're worth just to get them off their property rolls. Some of them are well-maintained by regional management or abatement companies. Some of them aren't. Again, the ones that aren't, it's not that the bank isn't aware that the grass isn't growing. They choose not to address it. So if the bank refuses to do it, or the bank still hasn't taken title through the foreclosure process, again, is there something we can do to hurry up the foreclosure process? Maybe that's something we can lean on. I know that's county, and that's court system-related, but I just don't see the need to add more burden to banks that may keep them from wanting to lend here. Again, if I'm a bank, and I know that everything's going to get dumped on me, a local bank, I don't want to lend in this community. And I know that's a reality for some of the smaller banks, that they hope it goes to auction, and then the next person comes in and fixes those problems. I just, other than the few that are very high-profile vacancies and commercial vacancies that we're already abating and trying to go through the lien process, unless there's a demonstrated need for this, I just don't see a whole lot of benefit that we're going to get from it.
Alderman Verbi?
It's an opportunity to create contact with the owner, perhaps to find a different way for them to keep the building inhabited, or the commercial property in business. Could we have situations where, I could think of the old Kentucky Fried Chicken building on South Fourth Street. I've heard comments in the public, well, that they're asking too much for the building, this excuse, that excuse. Well, to me, if we have this language in place, we can make that contact with the owner and say, what can we do to find a happy medium to get this place occupied?
Even though it's maintained and we're not abating?
It's obvious that we have one Alderman who feels very strong that we ought to be more proactive in this regard, another who feels that perhaps the status quo does not present any serious problem. I know, Thaddeus, if I ask you, if you had your druthers, you'd have three or four more boots on the ground, and we would be able to take a look at this. But we don't have that capability. Anybody else here have any thoughts one way or the other? Alderman Faver?
You know, similar, it's like Alderman Jacobson, asking his questions in the beginning, I guess I didn't quite understand what the purpose of having the registry is going to be. If we contact, you know, if we contact the owners and they don't want to comply, if they don't want to, you know, we can assess them the fee, but if they don't want to pay the fee, you know, we're still going to be having to abate the properties and things like that. So I don't know. I guess, I certainly don't want to add three new employees. So I'm clear on that. So my option would be C, if we went forward with anything. But I would just need to know more about, I don't know, when somebody doesn't want to take care of their property, they're just not going to do it. So I don't know. And there's enough of the gray area in between of who's the owner, that it's going to be difficult.
Alderman Areco, did you have a comment?
I guess my ear is sort of perked up with the thought, you know, the ever-popular money. I mean, you know, if there would be a way to get some revenue from this process. But I agree with Alderman Faver that it probably is going to be difficult to work with the owners or the banks. So if it's relatively easy to get some basic information, that we could get a little bit more detail on that piece of it, I'd say go ahead, but, you know...
Absolutely.
Don't spend another 500 hours on it.
Yeah.
Does that give you some...
It does. Just to clarify, my druthers would be to go the route of creating a revenue stream for the city without having to hire more staff.
The third party?
Yes.
The third party?
Right.
Great.
Why don't you give us an update, then, perhaps in a couple of months?
Absolutely. I'll find out some best practices has happened with this company, and then do some research as well into other companies, just so we can better understand if this is, you know, the norm for these companies, or if they're just unique in that way.
So mayor, we include this in the memo. What I would suggest that we do is, this is included as part of our budget presentation. So when community development makes their presentation to the council, you discuss this, because if we take on any new program, it has an implication as to what gets done or what doesn't get done. So I would suggest that Joel and Charlton, as community development director, make that presentation, come in with the cost implications, and then you can tell us as part of that presentation as to where you want our priorities to be in fiscal year 19 and community development.
Yeah. I think that's what we were asking here.
Okay.
Yeah, Alderman.
Thaddeus, one other place we could maybe check for an ordinance is South Chicago Heights. They gave a presentation a couple of years ago at IML, and I thought their ordinance looked like it was fairly successful. We might try reaching out to them.
Absolutely. Thank you for the suggestion.
Okay. Thank you, Thaddeus. Appreciate it. Welcome. It's great to have you. University Village Social Services overview. Jason Mitchnick is going to have a comment on that. Jason?
Thank you, mayor. I'm here this evening to provide an update on the status of the RFP and the proposals that were received by the city in regards to University Village Social Services. As a refresher, through the rezoning and sale of University Village security properties, is obligated to provide funding specifically for social service delivery for University Village residents in the surrounding area. That was a half a million dollars over a 15-year period, which breaks out to $33,333 annually. Looking at the best way to spend that funding, we had a team of people that had done some work in University Village, and also included the president of the tenants' association, start talking to social service agencies in the community. Professor Kendall Thew from NIU, who's a faculty member in the anthropology department, had also worked with some of his students at one point to do some surveying and identify, to identify and rank the needs of residents. At that point, we had identified that there were several needs that weren't going to be able to, I guess, be attacked through just a single agency. So the RFP that we released last summer encouraged applicants to come together in a collaborative nature, to partner together on a single proposal. So the city did receive two proposals. One of those was with Family Service Agency as the lead contact, and the other was with the Kishawaki YMCA. The Kishawaki YMCA proposal was really for Camp Power. It does involve multiple agencies in a collaborative nature, and Camp Power has been successful. However, the selection team that was reviewing those proposals felt that the distinct disadvantage with that proposal was the amount of time that Camp Power is throughout the year. with that proposal was the amount of time that Camp Power is throughout the year. It's only a short period in the summer, and it really wasn't addressing the long-term needs of residents in University Village in that neighborhood. The Family Service Agency proposal included 4C, Adventure Works, DeKalb County Community Gardens, DeKalb County Health Department, Illinois Work Net Center, and Kishawaki College. The original proposal also included the Regional Office of Education. And they, after speaking with the selection committee and then also interviewing a couple of tenants at University Village, it was recommended by them to remove the component from the Regional Office of Education, which was specifically for a truancy prevention officer. It was to fund a part-time truancy prevention officer. The original RFP didn't address truancy as one of the identified needs of residents. That was the primary reason. So, without going into significant detail of what the agencies in this proposal are going to be providing, I have requested that when we do bring the agreement back for the final vote from council, that those agencies would be here to provide an overview of their proposed services. But just at a very high level, Family Service Agency would have a part-time neighborhood case manager that would have approximately 20 hours a week onsite at University Village in their community room to work with residents, and they would also act as the coordinator between the other agencies. 4C is going to work with FSA and investigate, and also bring some of their youth development, their pre-K, early childhood programs to University Village. Adventure Works is going to do their Adventure University program that they had started a couple, I think it was last year, the 2016, that was funded through a grant by 3M. So, this funding, they would be one of the funded agencies through this proposal. Community Gardens is the other funded agency. So, you have three funded agencies: FSA, Adventure Works, and Community Gardens. DeKalb County Community Gardens would be expanding with their programming that they currently have at University Village. They'd be constructing new beds and doing some more programming that revolve around that. DeKalb County Health Department, and then Illinois Work Net and Kishawaki would be unfunded agencies that have agreed to participate. So, the Health Department would do public health informational events specifically at University Village, and then also coming in and working with residents to inform them of all the services that they do offer just up the street. And then the Work Net Center and Kishawaki College are funded through the Workforce Opportunity Innovation Act, WIOA. I think I said that backwards. And they actually, there's federal funding available for low-income residents to either get training through Kishawaki, or Illinois Work Net Center will work to pair them with employers in the area. And they've already, prior to when the construction of the community center, they had already started doing some onsite orientations and had some decent turnout from residents. So, they would be expanding that. So, in addition to all the services that these agents are going to be providing, there's also a coordination component of it so that onsite neighborhood case manager is aware of all the programming and scheduling, the components that would be coming in. The idea of this was really to bring services directly to residents rather than funding agencies and then expecting the residents to be able to go out and connect with those services because transportation is one of the top identified needs, and it's a challenge for residents that don't have a car to get directly to the services. So, as I say, we're continuing to go back and forth with the agencies. I think we only have one round of edits to make to the agreement, and then in March, we'd be bringing back the final agreement for a vote that would include all these agencies. And at that time, those agencies would go into more detail about the services they would provide as part of that agreement, and then also their vision about how they want to expand their programming using the city's funding to leverage fundraising and other sources, grants and whatnot in the community. So, I would entertain any questions at this time.
I like the collaboration component of this big time. Alderman Jacobson?
Explain to me what the case manager's role is. I mean, do they... What does it mean that that's the bulk of the funding and where it's going? What is the expectation of work product from this person?
So, case management and the addendum that will be provided as part of the agreement goes and gives a really good example. But a case manager, when a resident or a client would come in, they would sit down with them, and they would talk to them about their situation. And then that person is really going to either direct them to services directly, they can be provided directly through Family Service Agency, or connecting them with the other agencies that are part of this collaboration, or not necessarily signed onto the agreement but are in the community. If there's something that's not part of this collaboration, this proposal, they would still be able to make a referral to that agency. It's not just the finger pointing, though. It's really important that the case manager is also tracking and following up with the outcomes of that resident. So, if they come in with a specific need, employment, for example, if they're looking for employment, they're going to follow up and make sure that they're attending something, some event with Work Net, or connecting and following through to make sure that they actually get the training or the job that they were looking for.
So, we have an agreement before us in March, and this is fully funded by Security Properties?
Correct.
$500,000. We're going to spend about $100,000 over the next three years.
Correct. Yeah, the term of the agreement will be over a three-year period. And the reason we did that is some agencies, they have a higher startup cost than they would in the subsequent years. So, we wanted to provide that flexibility. If there's some sort of hard costs to get a program off the ground, that they would be able to have a higher amount of funding in the year one, and then reduce funding in years two and three.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman, no wait.
Jason, what kind of feedback have you gotten from the tenants? I would assume that there's a tenant liaison on the selection committee, but has there been any other kind of outreach to tenants?
Yeah, I would like to first like to thank the president, or former president of the Tenants Association, TR, who's also one of our AGN task members, for helping put us in contact with a couple of other residents for us to sit down and go over the two proposals with. We did also, myself and Joanne Rouse, did go make an attempt to sit down. We made ourselves available at the community center to talk to residents about the proposal and kind of the way we're moving forward. Unfortunately, the community room is under construction, so it was just not a conducive environment to have a good conversation. So, we didn't get the feedback that we really wanted to. But we did have the Tenants Association participation in both the structuring of the RFP and then also the selection of the two.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Verbic?
Jason, did you say it was the residents that were not interested in truancy help?
Yeah, it was the residents through those interviews that I conducted, and then also the selection team on this RFP.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it. Okay, let's move right along. Self-storage Facility Revenue Options. And Joellen Charlton, our Community Development Director, is going to talk on this. Joellen?
I'm back.
Yes.
Making changes to the UDO in the name of being business-friendly isn't an easy job, right? So, we have done those, obviously. We understand that's a point of your current conversation, and we do do that already. And this case is a good example of our follow-through on that type of an activity. Just to give you a little bit of background or the backstory to why we're here tonight talking about this, Jim Mason owns a property on South Fourth Street that has had a vacancy in it for quite some time. The property is zoned commercial. I think it used to have a grocery store business in that location. In my short time here, he's approached the city on a couple of occasions with proposals of other various types of commercial uses that meet the listed permitted or special uses in the UDO, and hasn't been able to effectuate any kind of a lease under those terms. Recently, when he came to the city with an idea to ask the city's consideration to change the code, so do a text amendment that would allow different uses in a commercial zone. And so, he proposed the indoor self-climate-controlled storage units as something that we should consider to allow in a commercial zone. We don't really have that product here in DeKalb right now. It is a product that you will see, Cube Smart, Life Storage. These are facilities that are both being retrofitted into existing facilities as well as new facilities being constructed. And typically, the user goes into the facility. So, they either enter through a door, or more commonly, what we're seeing is that they'll key card into an overhead door, drive into the facility, kind of pull up to wherever their aisle of their storage place might be, stop the car, unload, you know, continue through that way. This facility at South Fourth wouldn't accommodate that particular type of a scenario, but because they have the loading docks on the north side of the building that previously served to offload the facilities, it could be either or. So, they could offload facilities from that loading dock area, or people could park in the parking lot and go inside. So, again, initially, somebody comes in like that, and again, knowing the council has this desire to start with yes, and, you know, how do we get people to have their item considered? We talked them through the text amendment procedure. So, text amendment requires public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission and approval of an ordinance by the council. So, we talked through that. Part of our job in doing that as well is to advise you whether or not that's a good decision, and things that you need to be thinking about before you decide whether that's a good thing to do or not. Commercial zones, obviously, are one of the city's primary resources for collecting retail sales tax. So, a lot of the uses that you see listed in a commercial district are things that are going to provide cities with an opportunity to collect the retail sales tax. And obviously, that's something we rely on to fund our operations. So, in an instance where we're making a broad-scale change to a code that would allow somebody to now put something into that use that would, you know, prevent that space from being used for retail sales tax, takes that opportunity away. So, that was... That's a concern, and that's something that we decided we wanted to evaluate. And I had this conversation with Jim early in the process, and I said, you know, what do you think about that? And would you be opposed if the city had some consideration of some taxes or other things to make up for that? So, he didn't object to it. He didn't support it. I mean, I think he understood the position that it was important to evaluate that criteria. So, we did that, and we really needed to separate that issue from what the Planning and Zoning Commission looks at because financial issues aren't really within the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, we noticed the public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission did hear all of that. You're going to see that coming forward, but we wanted to bring this to you first so that you could have the whole picture when you vote on it, vote on the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation at your next meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission ultimately made a recommendation to approve it, but again, they also acknowledged that this isn't something that we want to open up broad scale. So, their recommendation includes a special use. So, again, public hearings are going to be required for anybody that wants to have this type of facility in a commercial zone. And they also had some conversations about the criteria for this special use involving an analysis that we try to focus it only on existing buildings that have some either legal non-conforming status, or they've become functionally or physically obsolete in their ability to attract tenants, which in Jim's case on Fourth Street is the case because he hasn't been able to have a tenant. On the other hand, the commercial space on Sycamore Road where, you know, some of our other commercial tenants are leaving, we may not want to give up on that space to be retrofitted with a retailer quite so quickly. So, anyway, kind of giving that zoning perspective. Now, coming back to the financial perspective, that's the data that's really in this report. And what we wanted to do was kind of outline for you some of the data that went into why we felt it was important to present this option to you for consideration. So, at this point, we're throwing a lot of numbers and information out there, and much like Thaddeus, we're looking for your feedback and direction as to whether this is something we put a little more time into, or, you know, or take something that's in here, and you say, "No, we're really not interested. Just bring the zoning recommendation forward." So, in the report, we took a look at some of the differences, both from the property tax perspective and the lack of sales tax generated from these types of facilities. We looked at other communities and did find that there are some communities who do tax this particular type of use, or have a fee, or a fine, or a registration, whatever you want to call it, in order to provide revenue. The data in the report looked at both the property tax. So, we know, for example, and Jim knows this very well as well, we have a few facilities within the community. They're not the indoor-type facilities or the outdoor access from an overhead door from your car from the outside. But we have some recent sales of those facilities in the community, and that data was presented in your report. And what we noticed in looking at that sales data and then comparing it to the EAV, the equalized assessed value, is that those assessed values don't equal a third of the sales as you would expect in some of those properties. We also took a look at the tax per square foot. So, this is the property tax per square foot of the site, and we looked at that data for all of our existing facilities in town. So, red dot has two locations in the community. Breezy's has a small facility, as does another facility on East Lincoln Highway called DeKalb Distributing. It's kind of hidden behind some buildings. But if you look on page three at the tax per square, site square foot, that's the number that I really wanted you to be able to look at and compare to the number in the table below that, which looks at the tax per site square foot for a gas station and a shopping center, which are, again, those commercial users. So, in the first group, we have between 15 cents and 22 cents per square foot. And then when you get to the commercial uses, you're looking at 60 and 80 cents per square foot. From the, again, from the revenue side, we looked at three different models for being able to potentially generate revenue. If that's something the council wants to further consider. And three approaches. So, the first approach would be a 5%, or it could be, I just picked that number so you could see what that meant. We could pick any percentage, but a 5% tax on the rent, again, making a lot of assumptions in the number of units and what they charge, and that data is all in here, but has a lot of asterisks under it. We have estimated that about $63,000 in revenue could be generated from just applying a 5% tax. So, you know, increase that or decrease that based on the percentage. The second method is something that Lincolnwood looked into but ultimately decided not to implement, and that was just a flat $5 per unit fee per month on each unit regardless of size, which was a little odd to me because it seems weird if you're renting a 5x5, you pay the same fee as somebody that's got a 10x20. But that is something that they evaluated, and in our cost estimates from the data that we were using, we came up with 79. So, 63 and 79. And then the last method that we used, again, was something that another community, and that was to charge an annual $1 fee per square foot, so making it a little bit more related to the size of the facility that's being rented. That generates a lot more money overall. We estimated about $197,000 in overall revenue could be generated on that kind of a tax if we did that for our existing facilities, and then, you know, we would add the new facilities moving forward. Again, this is not something that we've, other than with Jim, we haven't really had a lot of conversation. We wanted to throw this out, see if the council has any desire to do any further analysis. Or you don't, then we can just put it to bed and bring the zoning issue forward. So, I'm interested in your feedback at this point.
Yeah, we're looking, I want to have some discussion here, but I know we have two folks in the audience who would like to speak to this. Their comments may evoke some further conversation from city council. The first one is Mac McIntyre. And then Adam, you're up.
Okay.
Mac?
What you're talking about here is a pilot program, payment in lieu of taxes, except for it's kind of imaginary taxes that you're looking at creating this on. Jim's got an empty building, and I have no horse in the race. None. Jim's got an empty building that he hasn't been able to rent, even though he's tried several different things, and it hasn't generated any revenue for him or you. And so, it kind of sounds like, "Well, it could have, should have generated some sales tax, so we've got to make up for that with whatever concoction you come up with." sales tax, so we've got to make up for that with whatever concoction you come up with. And I think you need to proceed solely on that, because that's going to grow if it gets started. It'll move from storage units to other things. Now, we know we've got 240 vacant buildings reported. I'm doing some research right now to see what the effect of TIF and non-TIF districts is in the commercial properties. And, and there are a lot of vacant commercial properties that are, that are just not rented. And so the word repurposing is going to be coming to the forefront on these buildings. And this is something that can become a barrier in doing that, and you'll end up with vacant buildings long-term. So you got to move solely on that. And then if you're going to do this, then shouldn't there be payment in lieu of taxes when the city of DeKalb took Adolf Miller's stripping, shopping center down, and took all that sales tax and all that property tax for the property we put the skating rink on? Shouldn't there be a payment in lieu of taxes when Northern Illinois University takes the Monsanto building and $500,000 a year in property taxes off the roll? Shouldn't there be a payment in lieu of taxes? So if you're going to tax Jim Mason because he's investing in our community, then shouldn't there be a pilot program for the governmental units that are taking property off the tax roll? Those are real, not imaginary. Those are real tax revenue losses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mac. Adam Katz?
Hello. I'm one of the owners of Minify Storage. So Joe Ellen did a nice job of kind of walking us through the thought process here. We were a little concerned. The 5% tax is definitely concerning to us. Our property was built specifically for self-storage in industrial zoning. So I made some notes here, it's been a long night, so. I guess when we read through, have you all had a chance to read through this?
Mm-hmm.
So when we read through that, it's almost implying that the assessor is not doing, doing his job correctly. And what it really looks like is going on is the city is hoping to make up or supplement a tax revenue that they believe they're losing out on. And I was hoping that, you know, maybe you guys could speak to that a little bit for us.
Okay. You're looking for our conversation on this?
Maybe Dean, or could you guys speak to that?
I'm happy to answer. I'm not sure exactly what your question is.
Well, it seems as though the, you know, you're levying a tax to replace lost real estate taxes, you're levying another tax on top of this. And that's concerning for us, because we feel like, you know, once this tax, this retail tax is in place, it's never going to go away. And we are not zoned retail, so why should that be levied against, you know, a property where we're not zoned in that classification?
I guess I would, I would defer to Joe Ellen on some of the policy implications behind it. I think the comparison of the real estate taxes was provided to give an indication of the revenue that is generated from the site, because they don't generate other forms of taxes. And the different models of taxation were presented to provide some information to council. I'm not certain that there's an exact correlation between, I'm not certain that the pilot analogy is exactly what is being presented here, but Joe Ellen, do you want to?
Yeah, I, to answer your first question about the assessors and that, that's something, unfortunately, that's out of the city's control. So while I under, I understand, and you know, we have similar frustrations sometimes that we don't understand what those mean, it is the reality of what the assessor does, and that's how it affects the properties that are generated. So we're looking at it, again, from the outside, and then making decisions based on that. So I don't know if that answers your question, you're...
Somewhat. You know, I think our concern was, because we didn't understand if this was, you know, permanent, but Joe Ellen spoke tonight and said, this is something that's going to be talked about, and you guys are going to decide a certain tax. But when we saw, you know, a 5% retail tax, and we don't sell locks, we don't sell boxes, all we do is provide a, a space for people to store things. And I think it's a slippery slope, as I think Bo said, you know, once you start doing this stuff, where does it stop?
Yeah, this is the first I thought of, saw this too, Adam, and I, you know, my, my, my initial impression in talking to Jim Mason is that he's taking some property and some buildings and doing something with them, you know? And I think that in and of itself is very, very important to our economy. This is a, something we're not going to decide on tonight, is something that we certainly want to discuss, and I would be interested in hearing my fellow councilmen here on, on their thoughts. Alderman Fagan?
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Jerry Holdhardly, and Mac, I agree with you. You know, if we start something here, where are we going to stop? I mean, we're going to tax, I think it was discussed earlier, haircuts? What are we going to do here? You know, the other thing is, I understand, Adam, your frustration that, and it's our frustration also, that when this, these properties are under assessed by quite a bit, and there's nothing we can do about it. I mean, it's frustrating from our point.
To be fair, though, we're not under assessed, we're actually assessed right where we should be. Our property is made up of multiple pins, so when you look at that, that assessment number, there are multiple properties involved in that, and you're just looking at the storage portion.
Right. Well, I'm talking about, and I can't say about yours, but all I can say is, what they're talking about here is, what it was sold for and what it's assessed at. Okay? And there's a difference. There's a difference, and I have one-third. Yeah, there, there, I mean, it is.
Right. But this is a little different, because this property value is based in leases. So that's called lease fee chasing, which is not legal for an assessor to do.
Mm-hmm. Well, I'm on your side here, so.
Okay.
Don't ruin it for yourself. So, but like I said, I, in, in when some people come up here and say, you know, parking $25 a week a year is a cash grab, I don't think that is. I think going over and looking at something like this is a cash grab, because where are we going to stop? And then, well, I'll stop there, so.
Any other comments? Alderman, favorite?
So, yeah, I would, I, I appreciate you bringing forward ideas for additional revenue. I was, you know, it, like when we talk specifically about Jim's building out on South Fourth Street, it's, it's unfortunate, it can't be utilized for anything else right now. I mean, it was designed as a grocery store, he's tried other things. I'd love to see something that getting sold in there, but, but I also don't want to see another empty building either. And so I think the indoor storage is, is a great idea for, for the use of the building. And I don't, you know, reviewing the, the assessment information, I always think about how, when you buy a house and you go, hey, my taxes are so much higher, I, I, you know, we had this dip in 2008, my taxes should be a lot less, and they say, oh, the taxes are never based on what your house sells for. So I don't know. I guess that's the answer to this too, maybe, is the assessment isn't based on what it's sold. But, yeah, I would not be in favor of, of assessing a tax or an additional fee on, on these at this time. I don't want to...
You know, in the backup information, it's suggested that Jim Mason, and I don't know how, Adam, how you would feel on this, or, or Mac, but that there may be justification to consider some alternate funding for the city in this. But, you know, to echo what, what Mac said, I think we have to move very slowly on this, or this could be a, in a storm-rolling effect, could it not, that would be almost anti-economic development? Alderman Jacobson?
Strangely, I'm on the opposite end of this argument again.
Okay.
Again, there's a reason Jim wants to build these facilities, you can see why. They're massively profitable, and they have no taxes coming out of them, where, again, it's, as Adam mentioned to his, that his space is just a box where people store their things, mine's just a box where people can live in, but I pay 10 times the taxes you do on mine. So again, in terms of other businesses, in terms of other...
I guess, to be fair on that, you know, we don't use any city services, we don't have water, we don't have sewer hooked up, so we're taxed at a lesser rate, because we don't, we're not, we don't have a burden on the system, like a multifamily would.
But if there was a fire in your unit, you'd call the fire department, correct?
That, yes, we would use that service.
If something was stolen from one of your units, you'd use the police department, correct?
Sure, yes.
So why shouldn't you have to pay your fair share for those things?
Well, we do, because 10% of those, of our tax goes to DeKalb, and that should be able to cover those services.
Again, being that the property rate is so low on those type of facilities, and again, I, my word is...
You were just annexing into the city last year.
A, I don't know if the city should be, I, I think it would be more appropriate that the county levied in to something like this, and that we were given a share of some of that money to, to represent our facilities, only because then it doesn't cover fairness between Sycamore, Malta, Cortland, that also have storage facilities. I just think it's a more appropriate venue for the tax. But again, when you're looking at some of these facilities that are paying $900 a year, no, that doesn't cover the fire services when something burns. That doesn't even cover the, the time to roll the trucks there if something doesn't burn. So I, do I think that we should open a whole discussion on service taxes and pilots and those things? Maybe at some point. Again, the, the reason these people are interested in doing these facilities is they are massively profitable, and there is very low taxes on them, and there are no sales taxes on them, and that's why they want to do it. And when you open that floodgate for some of these commercial zones, any vacant building, this becomes a better replacement than a commercial tenant in many cases, because it is much more profitable, it is much, once you build the infrastructure, it is much less work, and you control the facility long-term. I just think you're opening up a can and going into your commercial districts that should be generating sales taxes, that should be generating significant sales taxes in terms of the 23 property, our prime commercial district. Again, the, the reality is $1,800 a year that we're getting from these things, when they're making, what, close to a million dollars a year in revenues? No, they are not paying their fair share, not by any stretch of the imagination.
If I can, if I could just speak to...
Adam, yeah?
If I can speak to the, the revenue, and I know you said there were asterisks, asterisks by it, you know, ours is overstated by, by double. We're not pulling in over $300,000 gross on our facility, it's, it's not happening, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any closing comments, Joe Ellen?
I just want to clarify one thing that the Planning and Zoning Commission made, that you'll see when you see their recommendation, is they did take to heart that we don't want to turn Route 23, Sycamore Road, and some of the commercial uses along there for this type of product. They, they are really looking to limit it to existing structures that have experienced some level of extended vacancy, and meeting some of those criteria. Having said that, Jim Mason also does have another property on Sycamore Road that he anticipates doing this as well. So, you know, to your point of opening the floodgate, and it is, it is a lucrative business, I, I think we do need to be a little bit protective of, of making sure that space stays reserved for commercial uses. The other technical planning thing I'll just throw out here, when you look at a property like Jim Mason's on South Fourth Street, we look at that property becoming functionally obsolete, you know? So it's, it's not, it's in a location that isn't conducive, and the building isn't conducive, it probably would need a lot of work to accommodate the smaller tenants. So, you know, in those kind of situations, a long enough vacancy ultimately might lead to it becoming non-conforming with current codes. If it's vacant long enough, then, you know, you could get into situations where the whole provision of your non-conforming section is intended to let those properties live out their useful life, but then hope that the reinvestment. In all of my 30-year career, I have never seen a council, you know, invoke that provision of the code, but I did want to point that out, because it is something that your codes currently provide for. You know, the intent is to let it live its life out, and then hopefully promote new reinvestment in the area. It's very business unfriendly, because you're telling that business owner that they can't continue to, you know, reap the benefit of the investment that they've made. It's, it's virtually going to become something that has...
Which your predecessor told me on a building I own down the street, just so you're aware, so it has been invoked here.
Okay. So I just wanted to throw that, but that's, that's my only comment, and we'll take whatever direction you want. Our intent at this point is to move the Planning and Zoning's recommendation to the next council meeting, and so I'm just looking for direction from you, whether it's with or without this, or any modified version of this.
Any thought? Alderman Fanoukis?
You know, I think that rather than confuse us with the issue next week of, or two weeks of potentially approving this type of use, I think maybe we could revisit the discussion at some time in the future, not bring it back, back quickly. I think that'll give us some, some time to mull this over. I have some concerns that it looks an awful lot like a service tax, that, you know, that the state of Illinois really doesn't have at this time. So I think that, that sometime maybe we can revisit in the future, but not at this time.
Are you comfortable with that?
I think that's the consensus of the council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, our 2017 media report. Ray Munch, and Jason?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, looking at the clock, we're going to move through this as efficiently as we possibly can. The annual media report was first presented in 2016 as just a high-level overview of what the city does to communicate to its residents. We've expanded it quite a bit this year, because we've added some new tools to the toolbox. Jason's going to talk about that a little bit, this is a good opportunity to introduce Jason. I had the opportunity to introduce him to the mayor last week. Jason is one of our management interns through the MPA program at Northern Illinois University. He's in his first year of the MPA program. He's also a second-year law student at Northern Illinois University, so he brings a lot of great attributes to the city. That said, Jason's going to speak to the media report that you have in your packet, and I will leave him to that.
Thank you, Ray. Today, we have two main things that we'd like to kind of put out in this report. First is talking about the website, and the second is some of the social media aspects. Starting off, the website this year had 203,000, 342 visits. This was a 4.9% decrease from last year. Moving on from that, you got, we currently still have, the main way of getting to the website is council-based machines, so that's, you know, your desktops, your laptops, but we do still see quite a bit of mobile usage, and then you have tablets and some other options. The final thing about the website specifically, we wanted to highlight, was the top five pages that people are visiting. Obviously, the homepage, because that's the landing page. Moving from there is the online payments page, then employment, then the police department and utility billing. So those would be the top five webpages that we have users visiting. Changing gears a little bit into the social media side, and that's where we've actually seen a lot of growth, as Ray mentioned, this year, with the creation of a Twitter and Instagram for the city as well. But starting with the Facebook, we were able to, we're up to 3,656 Facebook followers, which is a 16.5% increase from last year. Some of our highlighted posts are some of the job openings we've had throughout the city, as well as some of the squad car building we did this year, and some other community activities. Moving on to Twitter, this is the first year the city of DeKalb's had a Twitter account, so this will be some basic... so this will be some baseline numbers for future reports. During this year, we were able to get up to 208 followers, which we feel happy about. And again, some of the top tweets are community-based tweets, and we have been doing a little bit more in regards to making sure meetings and such are on Twitter constantly, so we do provide all that. And then another new program we started this year, or launched this year, was Instagram, which is typically, as opposed to using words and actually, like, sending out a message, is usually based for pictures. And we, again, this is a baseline for comparison of next year, and we were able to get up to 304 followers, and we're very proud about that. Again, some of the top things was actually a picture of the public works vehicles being prepared for snowfall, and then we had a couple other, the police swearing-in ceremony in December, and some other job opening stuff we posted on there. On top of the city of DeKalb, the actual city's three pages, the police department and fire department host their own Facebook pages as well. And the police department this year is totaled out at 12,379 page likes. Some of their top posts were updates on some child abuse case, officers helping a community member, and community alerts. So the message that they're sending out is in regards to what their department does. The fire department as well was up to 3,193, I'm sorry, the police department, did I say 12,000? Right, that, okay. Sorry, I thought, mixing up my numbers here, sorry. Fire department was at 3,193 page likes. This is a 20.7% increase. A lot of their posting, one was a job opening. They shared the city's Facebook page, or post about job openings, as well as they have some individualized things for paramedics that were lost in the line of duty and of that nature. Another new program that was created this year was the DeKalb E-News, the bi-monthly newsletter that is going out. And after our launch this year, we were able to get up to 286 subscribers. These are people who are on our email list that receive it, and we do continue to grow it, or we're trying to continue to grow it. Individuals can sign up on the website, and we do post it throughout all of our social media to inform people to sign up for it. The last thing we have that was instituted this year is Alert DeKalb, which is another form of emergency communication that the city can use. We have over 9,000 landlines registered to it, and then there's additionally 800 additional users that have signed up for either email notification, text message notification, or phone calls to their cellphone. And right now, we have over 800 users, and we're going to be trying to gain more. With that, I will turn it over to Ray for looking forward.
To wrap this up, we're really trying to focus on communication citywide, making sure that communications are consistent, and the messages that are going out are reaching as many people as possible. That said, things that we're going to be working on this year, the website is obviously always a work in progress, evaluated in contact, that might be out of date, or things that need to be added to the page. Social media, now that we're using different social media platforms, it's important to learn what those different platforms are intended to do and who they're reaching. There's different demographics as to age groups and things like that, of who's on what platform, so we're kind of learning along the way as we do that. And we're also continuing to use social media to drive traffic to the city's website. DeKalb E-News and Alert DeKalb, we spent the first year on both of these really working on how the system works, what content you put out, what do people really want to glean from that, and now it's about subscriber growth. So you saw, some of those numbers are fairly low, DeKalb E-News going out to about 300 people now. So this year, we really want to focus on increasing the subscriber base, getting that information out to as many people as we possibly can. Lastly, there's been some discussion about video streaming. We've experienced some issues with video streaming through YouTube in the past several months, which, when you use a free service, sometimes you're at the mercy of the service provider, so we've experienced an issue with that. IT department will be looking at new ways to stream video content and see what other options might be available to us there. With that said, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Alderman Fanoukis?
Ray, is there any way of even estimating what percentage of the likes and subscribers, et cetera, are actually going to residents of DeKalb?
Absolutely. You can dig into that information a little bit more. We kept this pretty high level for you, so that there's not too much data packed in this report, but the social media platforms do provide the ability to look into those numbers and see where they're coming from. Now, obviously, that's a little bit dependent on what people put on their profile, so if somebody said they lived in DeKalb three years ago, and now they live in Gurnee, that might not be accurately reflected, but absolutely, we do see a little bit of that. And we track those on a monthly basis to see who we're actually reaching and who's consuming the content.
You know, it might be interesting, even just as a side note, in the next report that you do on, in this topic, to include that kind of a number.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions of Jason or Ray? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I don't think there's anything else on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Reports, communications. Alderman Jacobson?
I want to go home.
Alderman Fanoukis?
I have a couple that I'd like to give. First, I'd like to thank Gene and the men and women in his department, how they handled Thursday in particular with the successful conclusion, no injuries, no shots fired. A credit to you and your department and the cooperating agencies. Those are just important, as important, so pass along to Sheriff Scott, please, too. And then again, on Friday, again, with the schools. You know, unfortunately, when one incident happens, there tends to be copycats all over the place, and we felt the brunt of that last week. On more somber note, just wanted to mention Chicago Police Commander Paul Bauer. I had met him once. He had been friends with my brother and my sister in the cities from the neighborhood, and just talks about some of the dangers that Gene and his crew face every day. Excuse me. And then lastly, I got a note from a resident asking council at some point, maybe if we would consider a local gun control ordinance in terms of assault right weapons and amount of ammunition. I don't know if that's within the purview of this council. I know some towns have done that, but I wanted to at least mention it, know the resident that I had read it, and that we'll have to see where that goes. Thank you.
Alderman Markward?
No report.
Alderman Fagan?
I just want to extend a little farther on Alderman's, Gene, your department did a great job. The fire department was there, they did a great job, and then when you saw the street department there blacking out the streets, you saw just a melding of work, working together. And also, I'd take that a little farther, that even in city hall here, I mean, there would be being brought up the code on what was going on. So everybody was involved, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you, Pat. Alderman Orico?
I want to acknowledge the passing of a longtime city resident, Bob Twombly, Fifth Ward resident, and Bob served the Water Reclamation District for 38 years. And shortly after I was elected, Bob, who at that point was in his early 90s, took me on a guided car tour of water drainage areas. I never knew there was so much to know about, learn about water, and where it flows, and it shouldn't flow, and anyway. But he was a man who was just passionate about that subject, and passionate about the farmland in the city of DeKalb, and a good, long life.
Thank you, Kate. Alderman Herbig?
No report.
Alderman Favor?
Yeah, in addition to the, kudos to staff, I wanted to thank the Public Works for their quick pothole repairs. Obviously, with the warm-up and all the rain, there's been just holes opening up in the roadways, and I've seen several patches, and so thank you for getting the team out and doing that.
I have just a couple of comments. This evening, as expected, this city council discussed and acted upon a wide variety of topics. Also, as expected, we did not agree on everything. Not with staff, not with each other, and probably not with each and every one of our citizens. However, we did try to reach consensus. We did come together. We did so with the benefit of the majority of DeKalb residents in mind. We did have some pleasant moments, recognizing several of our employees, hearing how several of our commissions are doing, listening to our former mayor, Cronopolis, who made it clear to the mayor, to the city council, and to those who read her letter to the editor in the Chronicle, how important she felt a joint review board meeting would be. On our library issue, I hope that our patience with its board in moving forward to abate the levy and return tax monies to our taxpayers will eventually be settled. As I emailed a constituent who texted me Sunday night, I do feel that a number of extenuating circumstances has led to the library's delay. I hope that one of my harshest critics, Mark Charvat, softens his assertion that this delay results in my being viewed as your failed mayor. However, I respect his expressing his opinion, and will respect the opinion of all citizens who speak up and let us know what they're thinking. Thank God that we're living in a land where freedom of speech is a privilege that we value so very dearly. Sue, report?
No, not really. Thank you, Mayor.
City Attorney Frieders?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, in addition to all the other services that our police department provides, we have municipal court call here at city hall every Monday morning, and with the recent holiday schedule of the courts, we've had a number of dates that we haven't had Monday morning court calls, so this morning, we had over 600 cases on the call. The people that come to court call are disproportionately residents. If you see we have 600 people on the call but don't have 600 cars in the parking lot, it's indicative of the large number of people that walk here, bike here, take public transit to get here. It's an incredibly important service of the city that we continue to offer, and we have, Detective Sullivan is our liaison for that process. She's here almost every Monday morning. We have retired police officer Ray West, who participates in that process, and a detail of other officers that participate in different parts of it. And the service they provide to our residents with that direct interaction and keeping our residents safe through that process is something that we really value as well, especially on more trying days like today, when they're dealing with very high-volume people that want to come in and do their business and leave. So we really appreciate that as well.
There was just a ton of people here this morning. When I walked in, Kelly Sullivan was out there, too. It's been a long day, hasn't it? Thank you, Kelly, and thank you, Dean. Anne Marie Gore, our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo and concur with the previous comments of the work that's transpired the last couple days, last week, for both our police, fire, and public works departments in a realm of different things that are going on. I do want to build on some of the comments, though, and just call out in particular the extraordinary hands-on leadership that, of Chief Lowry, and his strong leadership, and how he helped make a very difficult situation last Thursday come to the best end that was possible. So, we're very fortunate to have Chief Lowry here, serving the community. Thank you.
There he is himself, Chief Lowry.
Well, thanks to everyone for all the positive comments. I do want to say thanks to my fellow departments that were out there with us, the fire department and public works, and city hall was coordinating some efforts here to try and take some pressure off of us as well. Those things don't go that way by accident. We do try to prepare for them, but there were also some things that we saw we could improve on. So we are debriefing the incident and trying to implement some strategies and procedures to help constantly improve that. But thanks to everyone. All's well that ended well in that situation.
Thank you, Gene. Molly Talkington, our finance director.
No report.
Eric Hicks, our fire chief.
No report.
Jolene Charlton?
No report.
Tim Holdobin, our public works director.
I have a couple items this evening. One is, the refuse survey is still active. We've had a lot of response on our website, and also the 1,000 random surveys that we sent via mail. We've gotten several of those back, so please go on the website, on the city's website, and participate in that survey. Also, wanted to let city council know that we opened bids for the 912 Edgebrook property. We received nine bids, and they range from $311,000 to $595,000. And we will be bringing that forward for council's consideration next week, $311,000 to $595,000. And lastly, potholes. We ask that residents call us, let us know where the potholes are. We're out and about locating them as well, but whenever you see one that is significant, please let us know. Call 1-815-748-2040. Thank you.
Thank you. Our HR Director, Chris Raddell.
No report.
And finally, our IT Director, Mark Thorson.
No report.
No executive session tonight.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Whoa, whoa, slow down. Okay.
Move to adjourn. Motion. Motion.
Already been done.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
All right. We are adjourned.